I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board to order. I think, let me see, on the agenda, there has been one change. The Duchess County Ag Society is still working on their proposal and application for the north entrance, so they will not be here tonight presenting. And we have one other thing which you received by email on the Duffy property about restoring the stone wall, about the maple tree that's in the middle of the wall. We have to decide tonight how we want to address that, so that they know how to go forward and restore that stone wall. So it'll be discussed on the agenda.
I can have any place on the agenda.
That can go any place on the agenda when we have a little bit of time, which may come up sooner than later. Could I hear a motion to accept the consultant's meeting notes?
So be it.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I don't think we have missed, do we? Okay. In terms of, there is no other correspondence on non-agenda, well, there is in a way. The report by the ZBA, at their August 20th meeting, they denied the variances for the Karen Marks Blackwood property project on Grinnell Street. And we have received a letter today from her attorney, Mr. Rodenhause, asking us to continue the public hearing to our November meeting, at which time they will be coming back before us with a either revised proposal or withdrawing the proposal, whatever would happen along those lines. It was both a special use permit, it was the site plan, and the subdivision, the consolidation applications that they had before us. I've spoken with Art about it, and it seems that there's no reason for us not to do that, given that opportunity. I don't know what they're going to come back with, or whatever, but that gives them the opportunity to just pretty much decide what they wish to do with that property.
Technically, while the applications-
Talk about that when you get stunted. Go ahead.
Technically, while the applications for subdivision, not for subdivision, but for special use permit and site plan cannot proceed or cannot be approved by the planning board in the form that they just previously were submitted, that does not preclude, however, the possibility of their independently proceeding with the application for subdivision plat approval.
With the consolidation.
Because that is not affected by the ZBA's decision. So I think that's among the matters that Mr. Rodenhause and his client are going to be considering between now and the continuation date of, what is it, 17 November?
Yeah, I believe so.
So the, obviously, the recommendation is to continue at 6:35 on 17 November.
Woody.
If the ZBA has disapproved the plan that was presented to us, how can we continue it because there's no plan?
Well, on the basis of the subdivision, the consolidation, that's still, we still could approve that if they still choose to go forward with that, we don't know. We've heard nothing from them about what their plans or intent is.
But my concern is, are we giving them preferential, my words, treatment? Because it's a plan that's been shot down by the ZBA. As far as I'm concerned, the application that came through here, you could tear it up. It's no longer in existence. A modified one can come in as a new plan. I'm concerned about it giving them preferential treatment.
Yeah.
Aren't we, aren't we really asking for the modification and striking down that one aspect of the plan? I mean, the site plan is a site plan, and the building's square footage is what was rejected, so why wouldn't we give the applicant the opportunity to come back with the reduced square footage?
That's sort of the long lines at which we were thinking when we just-
Yeah. But, I mean, was it really necessary for them to have to come in as a brand-new application? Isn't that kind of a...
That's a good question. We don't really have. It went through modifications as we went through the hearing process anyway.
And a lot of our applications do.
And a lot of them do.
Modified. I just see it as, I mean, to what end are we doing that?
As it stands, they could modify. Let's say they went to 2,300 square feet for what they want to do, which would then be within what the law says.
How many modified plans have we addressed that were rejected by the ZBA? My answer, I suspect, is zero or very close to zero.
I think since I've been on the planning board, this is the first time the ZBA's rejected anything.
Glad you said that.
I don't recall it happening before, so...
I'm really concerned about the legalities of it.
And I agree with you. I understand where you're coming from, and I, I'm of two minds. My sense is to continue it, to give them the opportunity to modify, because the subdivision is still an approvable application that we have before us, and they haven't withdrawn that yet. There have been modifications as we've gone through this whole process. We did away with the apartment on top of the garage, we did away with square footage, we did it down.
Didn't go before the ZBA.
No, it didn't.
The ZBA said no.
No.
End of discussion, in my opinion.
What are we concerned about?
Precedent, really.
There's no point in precedent.
Precedent.
There's no application.
Yeah. Because, and Woody's correct, as the application stands before us today, we can't approve it. The ZBA has taken that away from us.
My recommendation, before we make a decision on this, is we go to our council and find out whether what we can and can't do, or should and should not do.
Okay.
And not leave it up to personal opinions in the group.
And we can do that. I mean, they don't want to come back till November anyway. We can defer deciding on this public hearing to our October meeting, asking for counsel to give us advice on whether or not we can continue this to the November meeting.
I think that's very wise.
And we'll do it that way. Is that, could I hear a motion to so...
Tomorrow.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And that's what we will do. I will send this to talk to John, have John give us an opinion, and at our October meeting, we'll make the decision as to whether or not we proceed with continuing that to our November meeting.
All you need to do is send John the excerpt from my meeting notes.
Okay.
Which, prior to Mr. Rodenhause's letter, suggested exactly that, that the planning board attorney be consulted as to whether the board should by resolution deny the applications and basically clean the slate and open the door to another application.
To another application.
They wanted to so submit.
Okay, well, we will, and as soon as I hear from John, I'll let you know, so we know how we want to proceed in October. Okay, as luck would have it, we can move right along with our first public hearing. Irene Dish, Darren Davidovich, Agent 262, New York State Route 308 East, Special Use Permit and Site Plan, continuation from August 18th, 2014, of conduct of public hearing on applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize subject to grant of area variances by the ZBA the conversion of an existing barn to a 2,100-square-foot detached accessory apartment on a 4.129-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC-5 district being an unlisted action under SEAKER. And is someone here? And no one's here. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? This is the project sort of across from the Baptist home, no, wait a minute, no, it's on the same side of the road as the Baptist home, and it has the big red barn, it's sort of, you're going towards the village garage before you go up Violet Hill Road, it's, it has the stone wall in front of it with a...
With the beautiful bushes. When they bloom in the spring.
Right, the pink bushes. The pink bushes and the, yes.
On the owner of the house, he came, you know, waiting for this.
Okay. Is Darren going to be here?
He should have. He should have been there.
Okay. Well...
Michael?
Yeah?
Darren does not need to be here. The planning board simply continued the public hearing on this particular case because of the pendency of the matter before the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
I would believe, and you further directed that, subject to appropriate action or favorable action by the ZBA, you directed that I prepare an approval resolution for your consideration.
That's the right idea.
Consequently, I think you need to do two things this evening. One is to enter into the record the ZBA's decision in the matter of Case 867, which was to grant all four of the variances that were requested, all four of the area variances that were requested. And then, secondly, consider the approval resolution with respect to the special use permits and site plan approval.
Which will come up later.
Which will, yes. Very good. Oh, excellent. Any...
We still can, we still open as a public hearing.
Yeah, it's still at its moment.
Yeah, you're still, you're opening the hearing and, opening, open the hearing, bring the ZBA's decision into the hearing, and then you can move into the record, and then you can close the hearing and move forward.
Unless there's any other public comment.
Is that okay? Everything okay? That's who I was waiting.
Right now, it's looking good.
It's looking good.
Any comments, members of the planning board, or questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We do have a, thank heaven, a draft resolution of approval, which after the public hearings are concluded, we will get to. Which you can stay for if you want, you don't have to. We'll make sure you get a copy of it, that Darren gets a copy of it.
Thank you very much.
So you'll be all set to go.
I'll stay a little bit.
Well, there is entertainment value here, so, okay. Right on time here. Okay, our next public hearing, John McGuire Jr., Mark Graminsky, Agent, 42 Ackertook Road, Special Use Permit and Subdivision Plat, continuation from August 18th, 2014, of conduct of public hearing on applications as then revised for special use permit conventional subdivision under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning and preliminary subdivision plat approval under Town Code Chapter 101 subdivision of land for authorization of the creation of three residential building lots as revised from four residential building lots and an existing house lot from the entirety of a combined 6.216-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC-5 district and the neighborhood infill overlay district being an unlisted action under SEAKER. Now, we continued the public hearing because there has been some issue, I think, with the zoning enforcement officer, that he wants, and I think this is still his position, that the existing house, he wanted some variances applied for to the ZBA for the existing house, because since the rezoning, the house no longer meets, as it sits on the property, the existing house doesn't meet all the setback requirements for that district.
Yes, so there's a sliver of the house, I believe Mark said it was like, three feet of the house that's been there since 1944.
Yeah.
Passed through the previous, you know, when-
Right.
-it was case 16 lots back in 1986.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the, I think there's two and a half to three feet of the building that been built.
Yeah. The issue, we, Mark was here earlier tonight about another matter, and we discussed this with him as well, that the zoning enforcement officer apparently is now requiring any existing structures on any property coming before the planning board for subdivision, site plan, and/or special use permit, as part of the review process and any approval process, be brought into conformity with the existing area and bulk regulations, rather than being grandfathered in as existing structures under what was previously permitted. And Mark said he was going to go and discuss this with the zoning enforcement officer to see exactly, is that indeed, because we don't have an actual official letter from him yet stating this, is that indeed the position he's going to take, requiring you then to go to the ZBA to get variances for the existing house, so that the planning board can then proceed to approve the subdivision, or has there been a change of heart, in which case grandfathering will, for the existing structure, the existing house will indeed be permitted to take place, so that variances will not be required, and the planning board can then proceed. The upshot is we're going to have to continue the public hearing to our October meeting, so that Ron, so that Mark and Heather's meeting with Ron to determine what to do. And if you have to go before the ZBA, then that process will have to be undertaken.
Chairman, wasn't, hasn't precedent been set because of the previous subdivision there?
Unfortunately, since we've been rezoned, a lot of the properties that were grandfathered at that time, it's the zoning enforcement officer's position that the, all properties within any sort of, any application before the planning board, any existing features of those properties, whatever, need to be brought into compliance as part of the approval process, or whatever the applicant is applying for. And that's what Mark is going to go discuss with him tomorrow. And that's why, you know, we have to, we have to continue the public hearing to October.
Okay.
Yes?
There are no other outstanding-
No.
...issues with respect to this application.
Nope. Everything else is fine.
Consequently, I'm looking for a directive from the board to prepare drafts of a NEG deck under SEAKER and a conditional approval resolution for your consideration, hopefully at the next meeting.
Yes.
Once this, once this other matter involving interpretation by the ZEO has been resolved.
Right. And I, that's, any questions about why we're continuing this public hearing?
No.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to October...
October 20th, 6:35.
Twenty, at 6:35.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I hear a motion to authorize Art to draft a conditional SEAKER determination and draft a resolution of approval for the subdivision for our October meeting, recognizing that if ZBA action is indeed required, we will not be able to act on that until the ZBA has taken whatever action it's going to take.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. You get to come back again.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, whoopee. Thank you for your patience, John.
All right, thank you.
It's appreciated.
Thanks.
And as we're right on schedule, our final public hearing for this evening, Thomas Thompson, Sally Mazarella Park, New York State Route 308 West, applications for special use permit, site plan review, approval, and wetland permit. Conduct of public hearing on an application for special use permit for a not-for-profit, non-commercial outdoor recreational facility and related applications for site plan review and approval, and wetland permit resubmitted on July 31st, 2014, by the Town Park Committee, Robert Ellsworth, committee chairman, in consideration of six-month expiration of prior approvals granted by the Town Planning Board on December 16th, 2013, in the matter of the refinement and advancement into the implementation phase of the master plan for the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazarella Park, said park located on the south side of Rhine Cliff Road, New York State Route 308, within whole or part the Hudson River National Historic Landmark and Mid-Hudson Shorelands District, the Estates District Scenic Area of Statewide Significance, and the local waterfront revitalization area. The town's civic zoning district, within which the proposed use is a permissible use subject to special use permit and site plan approval, and adjacent to Duchess County Certified Agriculture District 20, a New York State DEC Classified Protected Regulated Stream, the Landsman Kill, and New York State DEC ACOE Town Protected Regulated Wetlands being a Type 1 action under SEAKER, for which the Town Board, as SEAKER lead agency, issued an amended negative declaration determination of nonsignificance on October 31st, 2013. Take it away.
Okay. I just want the committee to let you know that nothing has changed from the original day we submitted this plan. We have changed actually nothing on the plan as such. The only good thing I have to report, we finally have all our permits lined up now, so once this is approved, we can get sign-off on everything, so.
Okay. Questions from members of the board?
Question?
Yes?
The plans that everyone reviewed and were accepted last time are exactly identical.
Exactly identical. Nothing has changed.
And I'm sure this is just vicious rumor, then. I have people saying that there's a second story.
No. No.
Saying that there's not enough money, so they're trying to route the electric and jump off the pool, and considerations, is it rock-solid? We're done with what we approved.
Right. It's the same as what we originally came to you with.
Any other questions from the board? Comments, questions from the public? Yes?
Can I just have your name, please?
Robert Ellsworth.
That was an easy one.
I handle those.
Any other comments? Okay, we, since the SEAKER determination has already been made, we are in a position to close the public hearing. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yes?
The SEAKER determination is going to be made by the Town Board.
The Town Board did.
Was made.
Was made.
But not the old one. They reaffirmed the negative debt recently for this new application.
Project has not changed. The SEAKER determination remains in effect as long as the, as long as the project does not change, which is the situation here.
Isn't this a new application? Why wouldn't, it's a new application. Why wouldn't they reaffirm the negative debt? It's just, it's just a formality.
The SEAKER determination is based upon the proposed action being the totality of the project, not the individual applications involved in the project.
Okay, I guess I just look at X span of time.
And essentially, now, you asked the relevant question before, Richard. If the project had changed in any way, then that SEAKER determination would have to be revisited by the Town Board, as it was in the past. If you recall, there was an original negative declaration issued by the Town Board, and the Town Board subsequently went back and revisited that SEAKER determination because of a change in sanitary sewage facilities, I believe was, I believe that was the element that changed.
Correct, but as we all know, SEAKER-
But in this case, the project is precisely as previously considered by the Town Board under SEAKER, and this board under its approval resolution.
Okay. So, as we all know, though, SEAKER is much more than just the project plan. It involves town issues, monetary considerations, a whole look at things. So, you can't go 20 years and come back and say, "We got a negative debt on this back in 1980." There has to be a time period, there has to be a process, and do we need to review and see if anything's changed?
You would think. There's no statutory time limit.
Okay.
It basically becomes a matter of, and you're absolutely right, if, over a certain time, regulations change, SEAKER changes, state laws change, local laws change, you know, we have wetland laws now in the town, we didn't have that-
Okay.
...years ago, so yes.
I just, you know, I question whether or not it would be prudent for the Town Board to reaffirm.
I guess, well, they don't have to. I don't know, I mean, prudent or not. Since it's not necessary, it shouldn't, there shouldn't be a problem with them not doing it. Any other comment? Okay, we'll poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, this time, you got six months?
No, hold it, you haven't passed.
Haven't passed the list.
That was the motion to close the public hearing.
Right.
Oh.
We'll have to bring up.
I was trying not to have to read this.
Now, you, you do have a draft resolution, and frankly, the draft resolution follows along about 98% of the prior resolution that was approved by this board in December of 2013. The change is our, the reference to the fact that we're now dealing with resubmitted applications, when, to date when those applications occurred. There is some additional language on two accounts added to the, added to the resolution that did not appear in the prior resolution. It surprised some folks, I believe, that the prior approvals expired, because there was nothing in the prior resolution that specifically warned the applicant of that circumstance that it would happen. This resolution does include specific language to the effect that this approval, this contemplated approval, will expire on March 15th, 2015, unless there's a prior application for an extension. That prior application for extension would have to be submitted to the board two weeks prior to that particular meeting date of March 15th. And secondly, explains that, at the discretion of the board, that approval could be extended for up to 12 additional months. The other thing that's pointed out in here is because there's a difference in the expiration timeframe set forth in village law, and, of village code and town code, there's a clear disclaimer in here to the effect that this resolution has nothing to do with any expiration that may have occurred or will occur under the village code in the village approval. So that has to be, you know, if it needs to be addressed, it has to be separately addressed. Beyond that, the resolution is essentially, in substance, the same resolution that you approved in December last year.
Very good.
Yeah, we saw Dave Arden in regards to that, and he already told me it was December, so.
Okay, you've got one year of that.
Yeah, they had, it was one year from them.
That was the confusion, that, you know, we were working at one-year date, particularly up to the village.
Okay.
And so he's on state, right, and I said, "Well, ten, nine, six months."
But I hope to have only a couple of weeks, so they won't be stunted.
Well, with the public hearing closed by roll call vote, which apparently didn't work for the other thing, does anyone really want to hear seven pages of resolution? Could I hear a motion to approve the resolution that Art has provided us with?
May I, a question first, please?
Yes, sir.
Can someone explain why the term refinement in the matter of the refinement and advancement into the implementation? What, what are we talking about, the refinement? To me, that says, does it change? So, why would we include of the refinement?
I can give you my understanding of what it is. It's basically that, as we went through the hearing process on Phase 1 before, went through all that, it did undergo some alterations. There was the, well, the change, obviously, the big one was the sanitary facility change, things of that sort. I believe another restroom was added up closer to the, you know, where the kids play and things like that. So there were refinements as we went through it. And then, this is the, the other phrase there is to implement, is to then go forward and basically build this out.
Okay, but this is, you know, here now, we have a plan, it's all, we've, everybody's seen it, so is there any reason why we can't strike that?
No. The plans that were submitted were, were submitted prior to December of last year, remain on the table today, were in refinement of the master plan for the park that had been adopted in 2009 by the Town Board. And it was a decision made, as those plans were submitted, to advance the project into implementation on a phased basis, with these particular applications dealing only with Phase 1. So that's the reason for those particular terms.
Which is, which is actually a much better explanation than I gave, so.
It's, you know, I guess I'm reading it very differently.
Okay. So I think we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, this time, poll the board on the resolution. Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, this time, I will say, make sure that you get the thing to me within six months to stamp and sign, so y'all can get going.
Well, I'll have it in a couple of weeks.
Okay, that would be, that would be quite excellent.
Is there, is there any reason why we wouldn't put something in place, a project this size, so this doesn't have to happen again? They come back, somebody gets notified and says, "You need to put this in today."
Well, the town has never, and the planning board has never taken the responsibility of informing applicants of time, just from a timestamp, but also from a liability standpoint, if we messed up, and a major project, suddenly, we could, the town could be liable. So just from a-
Or not notify.
Exactly.
Okay, fair enough.
Unfortunately.
The courteous thing to do is exactly what I did in this particular case, actually build it in the application, in the resolution. So it's right up there, you know, right up front. You don't have to find the expiration date in the zoning code.
Okay.
You're running early.
Running early, so what we could do is go to the draft resolution for the project on 308.
Yes.
And get that out of the way.
And you also can do-
Did everybody see that new driveway they cut in?
Yeah, yeah. He did a nice job, he did a very nice job.
Very nice job.
Missed both sides.
But it's just, it's like, it was meant to be there.
Yeah, exactly. No, it's, it's not a, right. Not a nice, huh, not a nice, glasses are attacking me. Okay. Okay, this is our draft, draft approval resolution for the first public hearing that we had this evening, and for Irene Dish, the detached accessory apartment. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, review by the zoning enforcement officer, and upon the satisfaction of referral requirements and the conduct of the required duly noticed public hearing hereby acts as follows in the matter of the June fourth, two thousand fourteen, application by Irene Dish, Darren Davidovich, agent, for a special use permit under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, district schedule of use regulations in Article six, Section one-two-five, six-eight-E, and related site plan review and approval, in the matter of the proposed conversion of an existing barn to a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot detached accessory dwelling unit on a four-point-one-two-nine-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC five district. All is depicted and are otherwise described within the site plan and building plan prepared by, and we have this information, and we will, we will fill these in. And dated, and short environmental assessment form, Part One, and agricultural data statement, and subject of an application for area variances to, one, authorize a detached accessory dwelling unit of twenty-one-hundred square feet instead of the maximum nine-hundred square feet otherwise permitted, and, two, authorize the proposed conversion to occur on a non-complying lot of four-point-one-two-nine acres instead of on a complying lot of not less than five acres as granted by the ZBA on August twentieth, two thousand fourteen, being a Type Two action under SEACER for which further environmental quality review is precluded. One, in consideration of the application for special use permits under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning to authorize the proposed conversion of the existing barn to a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot detached accessory dwelling unit with related site improvements, A, determines neither the use nor the proposed work contravening any of the general standards for all special use permits as set forth in Section one-two-five, six-seven therein; B, further determines both the use and proposed work to be in conformance with the specific standards set forth in Section one-two-five dash six-eight-E, therein for detached accessory dwelling unit; C, grants the above cited special use permits pursuant to said Chapter one-two-five of the Town Code and subject to the following prerequisite conditions and/or requirements. One, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement; Two, securing the site plan approval for the proposed work and subsequently a certificate of occupancy for the detached accessory dwelling unit; Two, in consideration of the application for site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning inclusive of the site plan and building plan cited above, A, waives any further site plan requirements as might be construed to be set forth within, like construed to be set forth within Section one-two-five dash seven-five-C two of the Town Code; B, approves the application for site plan approval and authorizes the chairman to so note on the site plan and building plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the following condition and/or requirement within six calendar months with the adoption of this resolution. One, securing of a wetlands permit from the Town Planning Board for a portion of the work depicted on the site plan principally being the installation of a stone wall and a stone brick or landing adjacent to the residential doorway; Two, securing of design approval from the Duchess County Health Department for proposed onsite sanitary sewage facilities and submission of documentation thereof to the Planning Board; Three, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter one-two-five, the town's fee schedule, and executed escrow agreement. In taking this action, the Planning Board further authorizes the Town Zoning Enforcement Officer to issue a certificate of occupancy for the detached accessory dwelling unit and related site improvements upon his determination both the above cited Duchess County Health Department requirements and all other codes, laws, rules, or regulations within the purview of the ZEO and/or building inspector, including but not limited to the requirements of the New York State Uniform Building Code and Far Prevention Code, have been satisfied. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing done, I will poll the board. Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you're approved. The one thing that still has to happen is to get the wetland permit, which I know Darren is in the process of trying to get accomplished, because the back part of the building is in the wetland buffer, and therefore, to do the work he wanted to do back there requires a wetland permit, and I know he's underway.
Just waiting for them, so.
Okay.
With my husband's sex, so.
Ah, but the, the rest of it's all done?
Everything's all done?
Yeah.
Is that a copy of anything?
Absolutely. Joni can give you copies of the resolution of approval.
When she certifies it.
When she certifies it, huh, that's right.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It'll be available tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Michael, it's, uh.
We still have.
You could move to the, the seven fifty-five item under old business, under new business, while you're discussing this particular project.
Ah, yes, well, do we need to have the Darren here?
Well, maybe Darren's going to be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what we can do is do the tree thing.
Yeah, do the tree thing.
The Duffy thing.
The Duffy tree thing.
As you all required, we approved the restoration of the stone wall along River Road in front of the old convent property, and, and Mr. Duffy is going to restore that. We got a letter from, from Christopher stating, asking whether or not we are going to approve the removal of the tree which has grown up and displaced the wall, so the wall can be restored as it was originally built, or to have the wall curve around the tree, and subsequently, well, it certainly won't be a restoration of the wall as the Astros had built it. I think it's important to note that the tree in question is a Norway maple, which is considered an invasive species in the northeast, and.
Not, not, not historic.
And not historic, no. Obviously, the location of where it is, Norway maples are very, very prolific in their seed, and they tend to overwhelm local woodlands, things of that sort, because they tend to force out things like sugar maples, things like that, local trees. This is just a seed that blew in from somewhere, and they tend to be very, very hardy, and they tend to be rather, um.
Invasive.
Well, invasive, but willing to put up with the sort of conditions you'd find along a road. It's up to the Planning Board to decide, take the tree out and the roots so that the wall can be restored as the Astros built it, or do you wish to have the wall built around the tree? It's basically our call. They wanted, they'll do whatever we want them to do. It comes down to opinions. I mean, speaking for myself, given that it's an invasive species, given that it's basically going to disrupt what was the historic nature of the wall, it's not part of the historic landscape, it's not something that was there before, frankly, it's probably not something that should be there anyway. My opinion would be to just have it removed, to have the root ball removed, and have the wall restored as it was originally, but this is, this is a board decision, so.
I have a basic question, who owns the tree? If you look at the photographs, they may be in the right of way, the county, the county's highway right of way.
They may need.
The county may own it.
Yeah, if, if we approve its removal, they may well have to go to the county, because they're gonna have to get a county work permit anyway to work on the wall, and so that would be part of the county work permit that they'd have to apply for.
Maybe they can get the county to pay for it.
That would be even better.
Well, the wall, the wall predates the trees.
Oh, yeah.
By considerable amount of time.
I think by leaving the tree, you're defeating the purpose of a restoration. It's not a restoration.
I agree.
And they're going to plant trees behind it anyway, so, you know, yes, it's gonna take many years before it gets big.
But the wall will finally be restored, which we've been trying to have done for thirty years, yeah. How did the rest of you feel?
Well, I go with the wall restoration, absolutely. I agree.
Could I hear a motion to authorize the chairman to tell Christopher, have the tree removed, root ball removed, and please restore the wall as the Astros had originally installed it?
Be a little cautious on that, root, just also, I think you should add, which is a point which is brought up, removal approved, subject to D, uh, County DPT, DPW concurrence, if required.
Oh, yeah, well, they're gonna need a work permit to work here anyway, because part of the wall is.
But you should be on record as, as acknowledging that.
Okay, oh, okay, adding that addendum, do you still, do you still motion?
I still motion.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, I'll call Christopher tomorrow and let him know. Uh, we still are nine minutes ahead of schedule. Okay, what other fun things do we have?
John Mensch, Mensch Grasmer, uh, time, time extension.
Oh, yes, yes. Jonathan needs an extension on his special permit approval. Um, where is Jonathan? There he is.
Page eighteen, the meeting.
Jonathan is here from South.
Okay. Okey-dokey. All right, here's the draft resolution. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows in the matter of the August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, letter from Jonathan Mensch on behalf of Mensch Grasmer LLC, setting forth a request for time extension for satisfaction of conditions and/or requirements set forth by the Planning Board in its special use permit approval resolution of April seventh, two thousand fourteen, in the matter of the proposed country into Situate on Mill Road and New York State Route nine south, nine south, in the rural agricultural RA ten district. Okay. And, ooh.
Top eighteen, top nineteen.
Thank you. One, accepts the discussion therein of the progress that is occurring in the preparation of detailed plans and drawings so as to satisfy the stated conditions and/or requirements as reasonable justification for the requested time extension for satisfaction of those conditions and/or requirements. Deems the requested time extension does not modify the overall proposed action for which coordinated environmental quarter review under SEACER occurred, which review culminated in the Planning Board's issuance in its role as SEACER lead agency of a statement of findings on March third, two thousand fourteen. Three, in consideration of the noted justification, grants a time extension of six calendar months encompassing the period October eighth, two thousand fourteen, through April seventh, two thousand fourteen, for satisfaction of those conditions and/or requirements. Four, requires a written progress report on this matter to be submitted to the Planning Board not later than March second, two thousand fifteen, at which time the final authorized extension of an additional six calendar months could, if required, to complete satisfaction of those conditions and/or requirements be requested. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay.
That's it.
That's it, I'm the easy one.
I don't know.
Take a, take a break.
Six minutes, timeout.
Nothing else?
Yeah, everything else will be presentations and things like that.
Unless you wanna take care of a couple of the, the easier of the two variances.
Ah, yes.
Baker and Bowen are easy.
Yes, they are.
The other, the first one is, is a little more difficult.
A little more difficult, okay. Have you all, I know that Joni circulated the information from the ZBA about these three variances, have you all familiarized yourself with them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're taking the first one first, no, the second one first, sorry.
Second, Baker, yeah, these are on page twenty-eight.
Rosemary Baker, area variance. They've, I believe, already had the public hearing, so we're a little late to the show here.
No, the ZBA's early.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess we can go with that instead, after all, we're the Planning Board, they can, we can, they can be whatever we want them to be. Um, we have a.
Page twenty-eight, Michael.
Okay.
They're both on twenty-eight, Baker first and then Bowen.
What I'll do is I'll read the resolution, and then if you have any questions, anything like that, comments, we'll discuss them. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Rosemary Baker, case eight-six-nine, in the matter of the proposed reduction in front setback from one-hundred-and-fifty feet to forty-one feet to allow for the extension of an existing porch in the construction of a sloped landscaped walkway for improved handicapped accessibility at eight Upper Hook Road in the rural agricultural RA ten district, and comments as follows. The Planning Board finds no proposed work, finds no proposed work to raise no other significant planning, zoning, environmental issues. The Planning Board acknowledges the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application. The Planning Board recommends the ZBA both consider this board's observations and additionally rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter one-two-five, Sections one-two-five dash one-two-four C and D, including due consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. I guess when I was still interim ZEO, that's when this application first came in, and I discussed it with a property owner. Frankly, I saw absolutely no problems either aesthetically, character of neighborhood, anything like that with what they're proposing to do. It basically is gonna integrate very well into the front of their, of their house. I, I saw no problems with it whatsoever, so, I don't know, anyone, any of any questions about this one? Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, the second one. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variance submitted by Sarah Bowen, case eight-six-eight, in the matter of an existing dwelling on two-one-nine Slate Quarry Road in the rural countryside RC five district so as to allow construction of a two-hundred-and-eighty-two-square-foot addition, including a new bedroom and entrance foyer, and comments as follows. The Planning Board finds the proposed work to raise no significant planning, zoning, or environmental issues. The Planning Board acknowledges the presence of practical difficulty cited in the application. The Planning Board recommends the ZBA both consider the board's observations and additionally rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter one-two-five, Sections one-two-five dash one-two-four C and D, including due consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. And once again, I find myself in the position of being able to give some information on this, since Sarah just lives kitty-corner up the street from me. The immediate neighbors have absolutely no objection to her doing this. You've probably all seen that little house there, if you miss the turn for White School House Road, you end up in their house, coming down Slate Quarry Road. And two people have hit it, it was knocked off the foundation once. That's why they have a fence. It's, uh, the way they're doing it and the plan they have for it is not in any way gonna detract from either the character of our area there, the aesthetics, I mean, it's gonna look very nice on this little house. Just from my own perspective, having seen it over the last forty years, this will by no means in any way diminish the value of that property, the aesthetic, or anything like that, and it really will help, it's a very, very, very small house.
How big is the property?
It's a portion of an acre, I think, if I remember right, it's like point-six-one, point-six-two, something like that.
Do we have issues about the amount of property in proportion to the building when it's that small?
Um, in many cases, we would. In this instance, given where it is, sort of right by the road, it's, it's not gonna make a difference visually from what's already there.
Visually, but do we have to grant them a variance on, on some kind of percentage?
We don't, we don't have, no, we don't have to, I mean, the ZBA doesn't have to. The ZBA has to go through, I guess, the five tests to see whether or not the area variance is justified. It's the ZBA's decision, it's basically just a recommendation on our part from a planning standpoint, do we feel that?
I only ask that because the house has at least three sheds that I can see, and the house, and now you're putting an addition on, I mean, how much more can you put on that property?
Not much.
What the Z, what, what Richard is questioning is whether, and apparently the ZEO has, has looked at this particular issue, but Richard is questioning whether or not the existing development coupled with the proposed addition complies with the seven percent maximum lot coverage standard in the RC five district.
And that was wiped out a long time ago, I, I would think.
Well, I would assume that the ZEO has determined that it does comply, otherwise he would have required that another variance.
That's part of the variance.
Right, another variance be, be considered.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, it's something that we should throw back at him then, right?
Yeah, we could include that.
As to whether there's another variance required.
With another variance is required in terms of the seven percent coverage of the lot. So we'll amend, we will amend the recommendation to the ZBA to include that.
The Planning Board further recommends the ZBA consult with the ZEO regarding compliance with the seven percent maximum lot coverage standard of the RC five district.
Very good. Okay.
Sharon, Sharon made the motion.
Okay, Sharon, are you still okay with that? Addition, amendment to the motion you motioned?
Oh, yes.
And, okay, everyone's okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. And I have, well, I've talked with Brennan about hers, but we'll, we'll get into that later.
And what about this last one here, this Mike Freer area?
Oh, that's a, that's an application that's just coming through the door.
So we don't do that? Okay, we're set, and we're back on schedule?
It has not been referred to the Planning Board yet.
Um, our next item is seven fifteen, Redwing Properties, Inc., White School House Road, special use permit and site plan review and approval. Planning Board consideration of captioned applications in accordance with below adopted resolution of June second, two thousand fourteen. And I'm going to be recusing myself, so.
I'll read it.
You will read it. I'm gonna sit in the audience and make faces at you.
Okay. And the referred to adopted resolution of June second, two thousand fourteen, reads as followed. Upon advice of Planning Board Attorney John F. Lyons, has set forth in his annexed memorandum of June second, two thousand fourteen, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby declares the applications by Redwing Properties, Inc., for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter one-two-five zoning, in the matter of a proposed nine-acre subaqueous mine site at two-thirty-four to two-thirty-six White School House Road, to be incomplete due to lack of demonstrated right to use the ingress and egress location set forth in the applications. Planning Board thus tables consideration of the applications until not later than its regular meeting of September fifteen, two thousand fourteen. In doing so, the Planning Board directs the Vice Chair to notify the applicant and New York State DEC of this circumstance and provide both copies, both parties with a copy of this adopted resolution and the annexed document memorandum, John F. Lyons, counsel of the Planning Board. And the above resolution was put to the roll call vote by the Vice Chair. Chairman Michael Trimble was recused, Vice Chair Melody Moore voted aye, Member Bob Babarad was absent, Member Edwardie Dirsey voted aye, Member Jesse Hewitt voted aye, Member Richard Murray was absent, Member Sharon Sharad voted aye, and the resolution was declared to be adopted by a majority vote of the Planning Board. Okay, how do we want to proceed here? Let me, are, you prepared to make some comments?
Yes. I'm Frank Dougherty, President of Redwing Properties. I have with me Christopher Stevens of the law firm Bon Shonik and King. He's gonna be addressing the board on my behalf. The only thing I have to say at this point, at present time, the driveway or access in question no longer exists. It has been graded and closed off, roped off with no trespassing signs, so I have no access to that ingress and egress at this point. I'm working with the DEC on an application to use my southern access, but that will be some time before I'm able to, to use that access. So with that, here's Mr. Stevens.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's our understanding that the issues holding up this application don't have anything to do with the use, which DEC itself has already approved, but relate merely to the ingress and egress from the property. I'm here tonight to implore the board not to consider that in determining whether or not to grant the special use permit application. I would implore the board as such for two reasons. The first is the fact that Redwing has clearly established a right to use this access road by using it repeatedly, continuously, openly, and notoriously for over twenty years. As a result of that, they've acquired at the very least an easement by adverse possession. So for legal reasons, which we hope we will not have to resort to, the town board should merely approve the application with the condition that's already contained in the DEC permit, that the permit does not authorize a trespass. In the event that litigation against the LeBotskis to regain use of that access road becomes necessary, using that option and approving the permit with condition would prevent the town board and protect the town board, as well as the planning board, from potentially being named as a defendant in that action, should it go down that path. And the second reason is entirely practical. It simply would set a bad precedent for the planning board to refuse an application based on a private property dispute. Doing so would essentially allow any opponents of a project to defeat and prevent any necessary approvals, simply by making a competing claim to the property or to the access the right of way. That's a very, very dangerous precedent that would, I think, complicate any procedures going forward in any case, and should be avoided. And getting back to the issue currently before the board, that is that the application's been deemed incomplete, it's our position that the town's own law mandates that the application be accepted as complete. This is so specifically because of Section 125-68 FF9C, which provides that in the instance, anytime a mining company needs to get a permit from DEC in order to conduct additional mining operations, that the town board accept as complete. As a complete application for site plan approval, and I'll read the actual language so I can make sure I get it right. That section says, "Upon receipt of the resulting DEC mining permit, the applicant shall submit copies of the involved permit and all information provided to DEC in support of the application to the planning board. The planning board shall accept the involved information as a complete special use permit and site plan application, once the applicable town application fees have been received." It's our position that that section has been complied with on our end, and that for that reason, the planning board is required to accept the application as complete under the town's own law. In the event that that argument's not accepted, we would urge the board to reject the other arguments made in the memorandum annexed to the original resolution. Regarding the fact that the application should be disproved as incomplete because of, because of the competing claim and the lack of the signature of a landowner, that claim has no merit either because of the fact that we have either title to the property, meaning the access road, or else an easement by prescription and/or necessity, meaning that we are, in fact, the owners of that property for the purposes of this application, and that the application's not incomplete for that reason either. And in addition, I would just point the board to ECL Section 23-2703-2B. That provision is nearly identical to the town board, to the Town Code, Section 125-68 FF5. The town attorney in advising this board to deem the application incomplete relied heavily on that section, which does grant the town some, some authority over ingress and egress from an access road to public thoroughfares. It also grants the town board and planning board authority over the route that transportation trucks would travel on those roads. What it does not do is grant the planning board authority to refuse or deny or hold hostage a special permit application. That section even itself says that where mining is designated as a permissible use in a zoning district and allowed by special permit, conditions placed on such special use permits shall be limited to the following, and then it lists the two instances which I disidentify. By the language of that statute alone, upon which 128, 125-68 FF5 is based, the town, the planning board is authorized to impose conditions, which we are certainly fine with, but not authorized to deny the permit based upon this private property dispute. For example, if the town board wanted, or the planning board, I'm sorry, wanted to issue a condition that said mineral trucks traveling out of this access road onto the public thoroughfare may only turn right, that's the sort of thing that's authorized under that section and under the Town Code. It does not grant the town the authorization to refuse to issue a permit based on this private property dispute. And for all of those reasons, we would urge the board either to accept the application as complete and grant the application for a special use permit, or else table the application until the next meeting while you guys consider the, the arguments that were raised here tonight. And with that, Mr. Dougherty and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you actively pursuing some kind of a negotiation with the LeBotskis, or have they shut you out?
They've shut me out.
Is the, all the grading and the fence and whatever, no trespassing, was that completely done by the LeBotskis, I think?
I have no idea, idea who did it.
We presume it was done by the LeBotskis, and we're hoping to be able to negotiate a resolution with them. As far as I'm concerned, I have not engaged in any active negotiations yet with them or their attorney, but I'm certainly hoping to do so, and I'm certainly hoping that litigation won't become necessary.
How long has the road been used?
Over twenty years.
By us, and longer than that by others.
Not by you. It wasn't by you.
By my representatives.
Yeah, it was, it was his, it was a predecessor to Redwing, I believe, if I'm recalling the name correctly off the top.
It's a different company entirely, am I correct?
All right, wait, 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 let's take it one at a time here. We have a question here. I can add to the discussion. We have, as you all received today, correspondence from John Lyons to us. And just to add to the record, on Wednesday, September 10th, John Lyons, who is our land use counsel, contacted both Kevin Bernstein, I believe of your firm, attorney for Redwing, and John Marvin Esquire by email as counsel of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. He inquired if any information had changed since the June 2nd, 2014 meeting in relation to the issue of ingress and egress over the LeBotsky property. Both Mr. Bernstein and Mr. Marvin replied that no new information has emerged. So the information that we received from Mr. Marvin after speaking with his clients is there's no change, and he received the same information from representatives of, of your firm. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And we're, we're really hoping to be able to resolve this matter without having to, you know, resort to litigation that'll cost all the parties involved significant time and resources. But as it stands now, the, Redwing's essentially precluded from using its own property. It's precluded from conducting mining there, from transporting anything on or off the site, and this is causing significant harm to Redwing's business. And if it continues, I, I don't think Redwing will be left with any option but to pursue any available legal remedies.
But we, we have asked you in the past to provide documentation that you have the right to use that property. Have we, have we not asked for that?
You asked.
And to date, as of this date, nothing has been provided to us.
It's essentially asking us to prove a negative, because we're basically being asked to disprove that LeBotsky has the right to preclude us from using our property. And the only way to do that, as far as I can see right now, would be to sue and get a declaration that we've required rights to that property. We're hoping that doesn't become necessary, but if things continue as they have to date, I don't, I don't see any other option.
But, but we as a planning board have no information to agree or disagree. We don't know, based on what you're saying, who's the legal owner of that property. We know the LeBotskis assert themselves to be, as you apparently are as well.
That's correct, but our position is that that consideration, specifically the ownership of the access road, is not a proper consideration before the board when determining whether or not to grant the special use permit application.
But we can't decide whether your trucks turn right or left until we know what the access road is.
You would be able to impose that condition at that time, but with, the access road's ownership certainly isn't among the enumerated conditions that are authorized for consideration when determining a site plan application. And they're very specific, you know, there are those certain specific statutory factors that should be considered, and any others should not be. And I, I would implore, what the DEC did, exactly what the DEC did, was include a condition in the permit approving the mining that said that the permit shall not authorize any trespass. By doing so, the DEC basically removed itself from the private property dispute and protected itself from any potential liability in the eventual, in the case that eventual litigation becomes necessary.
Was the DEC aware of the reported property dispute at the time of the issuance of their permit?
I don't.
No, they were not.
No, they were not.
They were not.
They've been sent-
The permit was issued in January 2014.
Right, and the, and the issue of the property dispute was not-
That had not occurred yet.
Public comment? Please identify yourself and-
I'm a resident of White Schoolhouse Road.
And your name?
The purpose of this meeting today was for them, Redwing, to submit anything new. We've kept this open for six months at least, and at this point, the whole point of this meeting is if they do not do that, that that permit is off the table. The permit, which I believe has expired anyhow.
We have a special use permit application in front of us, and at the June meeting, we tabled a decision on that, extended it three months to this meeting, pending the potential receipt of new information.
We've received no-
We have received no information.
I don't see any reason why this should remain open. If they have other information to provide at a later date, then they can provide it, and this can come up again to the planning board, or to the town board, or whoever it goes to. But at this point in time, tell me if I am mistaken, that the whole reason for this meeting today was for Redwing to submit something substantive to show that they do not have, that they do have legal right to use LeBotsky property. That hasn't-
I would just state that one reason that I can think of off the top, I had that this should remain open, is to allow Redwing the opportunity to negotiate with the LeBotskis or their counsel, about possibly-
Has that taken place over the last three months?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And, and is there a reason why it wasn't initiated?
We thought the door was closed, basically. We've been told various reasons why we shouldn't-
So what would make you think that there's a new opportunity here?
The potential for litigation, I think, may open some doors. I think that it may, I, it's becoming a very real possibility, unfortunately, and I don't think that either party wants to endure the time and expense that it will cause. And so I think that, you know, the fact that that's now imminent may increase the possibility of a resolution.
Other comments from the public?
Carl Duncanberg, resident of Ballack Road, next to White Schoolhouse. I, I had thought that this meeting was, following up to what Sue just said, that this meeting was sort of set as a deadline, specifically in response to my question as to how long a special use permit application would go on, and if not in perpetuity, then until when. The attorney for Mr. Dougherty is referring to litigation as if it's something that, you know, might happen sometime down the line, but at the same time, you seem also to be saying that you don't see any other option, and I don't understand why nothing's happened before now. We've been waiting a long time. This affects the use of our property, many, many residents, you know, not just theirs, so I hope a decision will be made soon.
Any other comments? I, I'd like to continue with the memorandum that was circulated to the planning board today from our council. Read Section 3, which is council's recommendation. On June 2nd, 2014, I submitted a memorandum to the members of the planning board discussing the current issue of ingress and egress over the LeBotsky's property. The memo discussed the Town of Rhinebeck's jurisdiction and authority over ingress and egress and routing of vehicles on town roads such as White Schoolhouse Road, and the application must contain points of access to be considered complete. Without the permission from the LeBotskis or another point of access, Redwing's application for a special use permit to the existing mine is incomplete. Redwing's application should still be considered incomplete because the issue over the ingress and egress has not been resolved. Redwing has failed to demonstrate fully that it has legal access to the mine. Additionally, Redwing has not amended its application to show a different point of ingress and egress to the mine. As of today, the deadline has expired. For the reasons stated in my memorandum addressed to the members of the planning board on June 2nd, 2014, and the expiration of the deadline to demonstrate that Redwing has obtained access to the existing mine, I recommend that you deny Redwing's application as being complete. Respectfully submitted, John F. Lyons, Esquire, and that is dated Monday, September 15th, 2014. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to questions and discussion from the planning board members.
I had a question for Steve. This is the driveway by the, the old barn at the bottom of the hill. I'd like to know what they're planning on doing with that. It's a 1700 barn, and the answer we were given was they'll just put up these concrete barriers, so that's going to make my property, property look just fantastic. And how, just how long is that? I mean, I remember that road from when I was a kid. So how far back does that road go that's on your property before it meets their property line?
How far does it go, tell us?
Before it meets their property line.
Their property is a quarter mile.
And who pays the taxes on that?
On the road, up to there.
On, on that?
We do.
Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Another thing, when it was Decker who was using it, or Kinlin who was using it, they used to use, maybe, when Decker, the last few years, it's been maybe five trucks a, a week, they still have to maintain that road a good three times a year. Now you have these people that want to come in and put on sixty to a hundred trucks a day. How often are they going to repair that road? Weekly? Daily? It's not a road like out here on 308. He told me to blacktop it. Again, do I want blacktop going down the middle of my property? No, I don't. And I don't think I should be told by you that, yes, I have to. And if you're going to sue me, it's the second time that you've threatened me with that, then you're going to do it. You've threatened us, you've gotten letters to please stop threatening us, and you're still doing it. So, whatever. If you're going to have to do it, then I guess you're going to have to. But you're going to have a 1700 barn that you're going to try to destroy? You don't even know. Have you been there? Have you gone by my house? Do you know how close my house is? I have a four-month-old son, grandson. Do you know how close he is to that road that you think it's great to just drive up and down? It's not.
Okay.
And I don't appreciate you standing up there and saying you own my property, that he does not pay taxes on. I do.
I would like to get back to a discussion of the recommendation that we have from our council. Thoughts?
I have a couple thoughts. I just received one, his initial June 2nd memo that was referenced in the one we got today. So this is the first time I got to see it, but it, John clearly states that during the review of this application, it came to the attention of the planning board that Redwing may not have legal permission to use a LeBotsky property. I get that, but that means they may. May not, and they may. So there's, there's a question.
And that was the purpose-
I don't think that question is, is our problem, for, for starters. I don't think it's something that we care about, either A, you have it, or B, you don't. If you don't, you're not mining there, unless you can find some other way into that property, that simple. But I don't think it's up to us to make that decision, and I think, I don't know how you go from may not have legal permission to advising us to discard the application. When's the last time we threw an application out as incomplete? Do we ever? Add to this the pending zoning changes that are coming down on the town, and I think we need to be very careful, so as not to make this look contrived, so that when we throw the application out, all of a sudden now they don't have a current application, because I'm sure the new zoning has to allow existing applications. You know, it's just common sense. You can't cut someone off after they've already, you know, it's, everything's happening all at the same time. The application, I think, triggered the concerns. The town has a responsibility to, I think the planning board, bottom line, should table this. I, I like their attempt at trying to say, well, we can make it conditional, but I think we should table it, we should let them work out their differences, and when they're all done, they'll come back to us. I don't see what this, I don't see why we're in a rush. Why are, what is our concern? Why not sit back and say, work it out? It doesn't affect us at all.
My recollection, and Art, maybe you can confirm this, I, I'm thinking that the first time we really started talking about asking the applicant to provide documentation of ownership or access was back in March. I could be off, but-
It was March 17th.
So we began discussing this and asking for some kind of resolution, proof, documentation, something in writing in March, and it was delayed till April and May and June, and the sense was that we weren't getting anywhere, we weren't getting any, we were being told by the owner of record.
You know, and I, I understand it, but again, I don't see why we're making this our problem. I think we need to leave it as their problem. I don't see, you know, the, the applicant clearly believes that they have legal access, and the, the owners of the property clearly believe that they do not. Why, why should we, why not step back and say, you know what? It's tabled, nothing's being approved.
Forever?
No, but I just think that, I, I don't think the town needs to pay for litigation either. You know, it's going to come back to us when you kick this out. If they're going to have litigation with the LeBotskis, they're going to come back at the town too. And they're going to say, you know, they're going to file an Article 78, and they're going to sue the town for the right to do what they were trying to do in the first place, rather than just wait. And if the LeBotskis, you know, win and say, take a hike, then there's, there's not a problem. There's not a problem anymore, and we don't, we don't put the town at risk at all.
Art, your comments?
As you know, I, I have not been the person providing guidance to the planning board as to how to handle this particular case or to address the, the access issue that's been referred to council. But in light of what I've heard this evening, and in reading John Lyons' memo, I suggest that the simple approach for this evening is to accept- that the simple approach for this evening is to accept Christopher's recommendation or his offer essentially, that the board table this particular matter, but that the board table the matter not indefinitely, but that the board table the matter simply to its meeting of October 20th for further consultation with John Lyons regarding his recommendation and the issues that have been raised this evening by applicant council.
One thing that I would recommend is the applicant's council's verbiage. Is it on paper, hard copy someplace? Because we don't want to have it misconstrue what you said.
It's on digital copy.
Excuse me. If you could send us a copy of it, well, let's assume that that recorded all the words. I think a hard copy would be appropriate and addressed to the town planning board and to our attorney.
Certainly. I don't have a word for word, because I was speaking from, you know, memory of a little outline I have, but I'd be happy to submit a letter that puts.
Are your comments that much different from the memo of June, I believe it was the June memo from Kevin Bernstein, which was recirculated to the planning board at his request along with this document?
I know that there is at least one new argument. I'd have to consult with Mr. Bernstein, who's away currently, but I, there's at least one new argument, that being that pursuant to section 12568 FF9C, that the application is complete as a matter of the town's own law, and that the permit must be granted, therefore, with conditions. Can't be denied or held hostage, but must be, you know, granted with the conditions.
So pursuant to Woody's request, you will provide that documentation?
I will provide a letter summarizing my remarks here this evening, yes.
Think that's what you're asking for, Woody?
Yes, basically. We just want to make sure everybody has the same verbiage. Nobody's misinterpreting it.
Understood. If I'm.
Just one further comment. I hope the planning board will either correct me if I'm wrong, or if not, be aware that by tabling this today, you'll be doing the exact same thing that you have done at least two times before, setting a hard deadline and then letting it go past with the understanding that the hard deadline was for Redwing to show us documentation. They have not made a move to show documentation to you, to sue the LeBotskis, or to do anything else. And I hope that you also, while you're considering my question, you'll consider, again, that this really affects our lives, our understanding of whether we're going to be able to quietly enjoy our properties in the future, or whether, you know, there's going to be a rapidly expanding industrial area in the middle of our country roads.
Melody?
Yep.
I'll defend the board's position this evening. The board does not have in front of it this evening even a resolution that it could act upon. What I would suggest in addition, so the board would have to defer to another meeting to consult with Mr. Lyons regarding the preparation of that particular resolution. It's not one that I'm responsible for. So I would kind of amend my earlier suggestion that the board table to Oc- 20th, October 20th for further consultation with John Lyons and providing a directive to John to provide alternate resolutions for consideration by this board at that time. One could be an approval, one could be a denial, and obviously, the applicant has an opportunity to provide additional information in the interim.
Right. Art's point was, should we have decided tonight that we wanted to declare the application incomplete, we would have had to have gone back to council and asked him to prepare. So we're not losing any time on you here in terms of what the process would have been, and I think Art's recommendation that we ask John to be working on alternative resolutions for us to take up at the October 20th meeting makes great sense to me.
One of those, one of those alternate solutions.
I'll get back to you, I promise.
One of those alternate solutions was already offered, suggested by applicant in the form of a conditional approval. I mean, we can get it off our table. Say, you know what? You have D E C approval, you have this, it's conditionally approved, and we don't have to sit here and listen to this over and over. The burden is on them to work everything out at that point.
But the burden is on us to make the decisions about ingress and egress and truck traffic and, you know, without a complete understanding of that access.
I don't. I think that's going to be established in another court.
Well, maybe.
Unfortunately.
Maybe.
If it comes down to that, if they can't work it out, it's not going to be our decision. Someone else is going to figure that out.
One of the things in the original, in the application, I don't recall, correct me if I'm wrong, where it was stated by the applicant they were going to run X number of vehicles per day in and out of that site. I think that's all supposition on the public's part.
That wasn't supposition, that was stated.
It's on the record.
By mistake, in his own words.
I don't, you don't have to yell at me. All you have to do is talk.
I think that's something that the planning board does have discretion over, and we're going, yet to hear numbers and traffic and resolutions about stuff like that. I don't think we're going to give them an approval.
I don't recall those numbers in the application.
I don't remember them.
What I'm really saying.
Whether they're.
The longer this goes on, the more of this stuff, people are not going to remember things that happened, and what we talked about, and what transpired that led us to this moment in time.
Right.
I just want to point out that.
Could you identify yourself, please? Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm a resident of White Schoolhouse Road, Tracy Blot.
Thank you.
I've been at every single meeting, and each time that the argument that Redwing is proposing gets more and more sort of pressed, which is that although they claim, and I guess legally they had a right to some of this property over 20 years, the residents of the.
Not they.
The residents of White Schoolhouse Road did not know Redwing properties. They, we did not negotiate our ins and outs with them. They did not, we had no way of knowing anything about them, and I think that it's, every time we meet, it seems like this comes up again and again. It's almost like they have some kind of lien on the property because they've been doing it for 20 years, but the fact is, they haven't been doing it. They've been having their surrogates do it, to do it differently perhaps from them. And I think, I think we're dealing with a completely different kind of company, different goals, different people, different numbers of trucks. I don't think we can just assume it's going to go on as it has for 20 years, and that never gets addressed. And the reason for, I think, going back and forth about the permit and allowing for the access is that people want to get it over with because nobody remembers, and that's just what Sue was saying.
It's not even their surrogates. Let Trace, sorry to clarify. It's someone else owned the property, the property was transferred to Mr. Dougherty, and someone else was mining it, as in another company. I mean, there's no surrogates or relations or whatever.
Right. They claim it.
Right, okay.
All right, well, I don't want to cut off public comment, I'll allow this, but then I do want us to get back to the issue at hand.
Last March, Mr., I live on White Schoolhouse Road, and last March, Mr. Dougherty was asked how many trucks he projected once this mining expansion was up and running. He said he didn't know, but it's going to be in the hundreds, hundreds.
All right. We, we have meeting records, we have PANDA, we can, you know, the issue tonight is not to resolve the number of trucks that are going to be operating of the property in the potential future. So I don't want us to get away from what the reason why we're here tonight. Art, did you want to offer a resolution?
Well, obviously, a board member's going to have to offer the resolution, but.
Would you read it so we can rehear it?
But I think the, quite simply, the planning board tables of the application of Redwing Properties Inc. for site plan review and approval in the matter of mining operation on Schoolhouse, White Schoolhouse Road, with the matter to next be considered on the, by the board on October 20th, 2014, at 6:45, and with opportunity provided for interim consultation with Planning Board Attorney John Lyons, including a directive to John to prepare alternate resolutions regarding the planning board's disposition of this matter, and probably adding which resolutions could include conditional approval and/or denial, or denial of the application.
Someone willing to make that?
Acceptable.
Yes.
Someone willing to make that?
I'll make it, but I'd like to make, ask a question and perhaps make a suggestion. What about the town's attorney as well, since they're, they've basically been threatened, my, your words, about being sued? So, maybe they ought to be involved with Mr. Lyons.
That's a good point.
Okay.
In addition to that, can we also clarify what deadline means? Do we have the right to say, you have 30 days, or do we not? Again, I think, my position is.
Your public hearing, they've offered to table, which means the public hearing stays open, et cetera, so you're not constrained time-wise. You agree with that? The board's not constrained based upon your offer.
The board's not constrained from?
In terms of making a decision. Public hearing's still open.
Oh, certainly, the board.
Yeah, the board has 62 days from the close of the hearing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right. My question was, the residents of White Schoolhouse would like to be done with this. So is it reasonable to say to the applicant, yes, we're going to table it, but we can only table it so long? Is that a reasonable question to ask John Lyons?
Well, I think that's the consultation you're having with John.
And that was the consultation we had in June?
You're asking for alternate resolutions, or alternative, whatever the correct word is, resolution to prepare for the next meeting, in the likelihood that those resolutions, one of those resolutions will be considered.
And frankly, Williams, and you folks as well, we want to be done with this, and we absolutely understand everybody's concerns, but we also are a company that needs to operate the property, and we sincerely hope that we'll be able to reach a resolution. It just seems like right now the sides are so far apart that litigation's becoming inevitable. I would be happy to consult with you or your attorney about what we can do to avoid that, and I really do understand everyone's concerns. We're not ignoring you, but I just hope everybody else understands that Redwing has a commercial enterprise to operate, and right now, it's just completely cut off from even using its own property, and that's not fair to Redwing.
But they just have a way to get there.
Let me, let me just add to.
We're not doing pumpkins right now so that they can.
All right.
And one of the things that you guys keep saying is that we've allowed them for 20 years. We allow, we have an agreement with Hayward, we had an agreement with Decker, we had an agreement with Kinlan. The moment we heard it was Redwing, we canceled. We stopped a third of our income. He's worried about his income? We stopped a third of ours to stop this. So it's not that we had an agreement with them for 20 years, so please don't sit up there and tell me we had. There were three other people we had our agreements with, never with them. You know, when we came in here and started saying no, it's when they came on into the picture.
I'm sorry, it's very quick. Can someone tell me why the planning board asked for proof of access to the LeBotsky property? It seems strange that you would ask for proof of access, they would give you nothing, and then you would suggest, as Mr. Murray is, that you approved the application. What was the purpose, in your mind, Mr. Murray, in asking for that proof if it's unnecessary?
Mr. Murray was not present for that particular vote, so.
Well, but I've read the notes. In my mind, I question the board making that a requirement, asking for proof. It might be, you know, I could say the same thing to the LeBotskis. I need proof that you don't have an agreement with them. It's, how do you prove this? That's why.
I'm reading the paper.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let me finish. Please let me finish. That's why I feel like the planning board shouldn't be part of that argument, and I think that it should be worked out away from this, this board, because it's not, we're not going to approve it if they don't have access, that's a given.
One of the things I would add is that the March meeting, I think some of what initiated some of this ongoing discussion was that, I believe at the March meeting, you indicated to us, Mr. Dougherty, that you were in negotiations with the LeBotskis, and you were expecting to be able to give us documentation.
We thought we were.
Well, so that, but the point I'm trying to make is, we were led to believe by the applicant that there was active negotiations going on, and that we could anticipate something in writing, and that, I think, is what has been held out there.
So we were looking for confirmation that that no longer is an issue.
And assured by the applicant that that would be forthcoming.
But, but, again, it's still a question.
All right. We have a proposed resolution that Art has shared with us. Woody, are you?
Yes.
Would you make that resolution?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think I'll hold the board in this instance. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
That was unanimous.
Pardon?
I just said it was unanimous, right?
Oh, yes, it was unanimous. One member refused.
Yeah.
All right, folks, I expect we'll see you all on October 20th.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to make every effort you can, if you believe that you have some opportunity available to do it. I do think it's sad that three months have gone by and you have made no attempt, apparent attempt, to reconcile this. So, you know, the time, the clock is ticking, and I don't think we want to see this going on, and not any more than anybody else does.
Understood.
Thank you. All right.
Joseph Romeo. Next item, Joseph Romeo. Going back to the chair.
Going back to the chair. You may come back. I'm surprised you didn't go out for coffee.
That's what I need.
Are we back? Is it under regular session now?
You're in regular session, you're in regular session, new business.
Okay.
Like in a lot of places, if you use somebody else's property for X number of years, you can never lose the access to. Like if you go down into New York City, the Rockefeller Center, they have to close off the street once a year. They don't, if they don't.
That's what I thought.
If we guys probably don't talk. I believe there's a question. I think.
What issues that, no?
But anybody challenge? Challenge? Because I know Ed was looking, he wanted that back. I know he did. He was going to buy Allen's, huh? I talked to him.
Where did Art go? I come back and he leaves?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He recues himself.
And the rest are going to follow him out, I can tell.
He's taking your place. What's the room?
That was right over there. Okay. Well, you won't. You did it very nicely in that regard. Okay. Good heavens. Still doing okay here, okay. Regular session. These are going to be initial presentations for the most part of people coming before the planning board. This one is Joseph Romeo, Sean McCluskey, agent, 15 Delano Drive, special use permit and site plan review and approval. Initial presentation as deferred from August 18th, 2014, at applicant's request of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize construction of a 216 square foot pavilion on a residential premise in the rural countryside RC5 district. Planning board review and processing is may be timely under Town Code and SEAKER. And?
Nobody here.
Nobody's here.
I would, I would check, go down and see if there's representatives here. I know David's here, I know Illyana's representative is here, and I know Jeremy is here, so I would, I would move those up and not make them.
I will leave this one with a circle, see if we go back to it.
Anybody here?
Any for Edward McNally. Martha's working with him, but no one is here representing Mr. McNally.
Martha McNally? Who's representing McNally? Oh, that was the other attorney.
Right.
Dish we did.
Okay, we've done Mench Gardens.
Did dish.
We did dish.
Was it?
Wait a minute, that, this is, no, this is a different dish.
No, no, this is the, this is the wetland.
This is Dish Take Two.
Okay.
Okay, and, okay. This, I'm in Dish, Darren DeVetich, agent, 262 New York State Route 308 East, special use permit and site plan. Actually, this is.
No, it's actually wetland permit.
Wetland permit.
Well captioned on the side.
Initial presentation of application for wetland permit under Town Code Chapter 120, wetlands to authorize construction associated with proposed detached accessory dwelling apartment, which we approved. See above public hearing. And within regulated wetland buffer area, planning board review and processing is timely under Town Code and SEAKER. For the board, what happened is it turned out, we found out, that the wetland area, buffer area, associated with Lanzman Kill and whatnot, runs behind the property that Mr. DeVetich.
It actually runs through the building.
Well, it actually does, yes. And therefore, the construction was going to take place is in the buffer, and there was an oversight, so they're just applying for a wetland permit to do, basically, more or less, a ridiculous, innocuous work, but you need a wetland permit to do it. So that's what this is for.
Because it would be essentially disturbing the buffer-
Right.
As we work on that building, even though it's an existing building.
Right.
And there is a small patio proposed for the rear, which would be a disturbance.
Yeah. So that's basically what this wetland permit application is for. Any questions for Mr. DeVetich?
Darren, could you explain to the board specifically the improvements that are involved within the wetland buffer, and just estimate the amount of square footage of improvement that's involved?
Yeah, I mean, the improvements-
I mean, it's a limited amount of improvement, that's-
Very limited. I mean, we're proposing to convert the existing barn into a detached accessory dwelling, so that'll involve some roof replacements, some siding repairs-
But that doesn't, that doesn't affect the buffer, which is the line-
You know, Ron Evangelista said, you know, scaffold ladders, that type of thing are disturbance, so that would be one form of disturbance. And then the other form of disturbance would be that there's a proposed patio, which, you know, four by eight type thing, just outside of the door, because we'll need a second means of egress from the building. And we would need a back door, and that's where that back door would end up, most likely, because it wouldn't be in a bedroom on that back corner, so therefore, it'd be in the buffer. So a small brick or a blue stone or some sort of stone patio there. And then the little courtyard wall that we proposed around the parking area, which is a dry-laid stone wall, the very corner, that sits in that buffer zone, so we could sweep through that. So that's the extent of the disturbance we're talking about.
Any questions for Darren?
Hello, Howard?
I don't know, is there any questions for Darren, above the planning board, for you? Hearing none, I shall read the resolution.
Actually, I asked the applicant's representative to point out the limited nature of the improvements that are involved in the wetlands buffer, because the wetland ordinance provides the board here an opportunity to proceed in one of two fashions. You can either proceed to public hearing, or determine that, because of the limited amount of the improvement, that a public hearing is not necessary. Actually, I should turn that around completely. The wetlands law says the planning board may conduct a public hearing. It doesn't say you shall, so it's not a waiver of the public hearing requirement. The actual imposition of a public hearing would be, in fact, an additional step in review. So I've provided for you alternate resolutions, the first of which provides for the scheduling and conduct of a public hearing, which is the "may." The second would be to not exercise the "may" option, and in fact, determine that the improvements are limited in the area, et cetera, don't involve any protected wildlife habitat or other environmental resources, and proceed with the disposition of the application this evening.
Or is there a third option, where we're actually still in the public hearing from the prior application?
No, no, that has been closed, and those applications have been cited.
Okay.
And furthermore, would have, that would have had, would have required a supplemental public notice and whatever, so-
Oh, understood, yeah.
So those are the options for the board.
One problem I see is in the alternative not to hold the public hearing, there's also no opportunity for a site visit, to actually ascertain the limit of-
A site visit has been conducted as part of the-
Oh, the site visit was done?
Yes, just, I did the site visit-
For the original?
Original application, and we did discuss the possibility of it being in the wetland at that time.
Oh, okay. I was not aware of that.
You actually pointed it out.
Paragraph three of that alternate resolution references the fact that the planning board has conducted field visit, and CAB has also reviewed this particular project.
Right, they were on the site visit as well.
Yes, it's very minimal, I mean, it's not going to, you know, it's not going to destroy any part of the wetland, to interfere at all, and I think Bob had his hand up too over that.
Yes?
CAB will have to incite the situation, as discussed at the last meeting.
CAB was out at the site, though.
Okay, let me just get the chairperson, who just stepped out.
Okay.
Yeah, because he was there. He was there.
He was, he was there.
So anyone on the board feel we have to have a public hearing for this? Okay, then let me read alternate two.
Okay, in alternate two, the, I'm going to fill in a couple of blanks. The first blank, fill in, based upon the landing area and the stone wall, approximately 60 square feet of unimproved land area. The fact that the building is there doesn't, you know, in the buffer is not really what's the question here, it's the disturbance of the unimproved area.
Okay.
Okay.
Wait, you lost me, the 60 feet?
About 60 square feet is the landing in the stone wall.
Okay.
In that ballpark, yeah, all right.
We won't hold you to that specific-
Yeah, no, it sounded like a lot-
Pointing out it's limited, as opposed to, you know, involving an acre of disturbance or something.
Okay. The town of Ryan McPlanning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer, hereby access follows, on the August 25th, 2014, application by Darren DeVetich, agent for Irene Dish, for wetland permit under Town Code Chapter 120, wetlands in the matter of disturbance, site construction within a regulated wetland buffer area. This work principally consisting of installation of a stone wall and a stone or brick landing area in front of a doorway, and occurring and associated with a proposed detached accessory dwelling unit on a residential premise at 262 Route 308 in the rural countryside RC5 District. One, determines upon review of the application, the extent of disturbance of site construction within a regulated wetland buffer area to be quite limited, involving only approximately 60 square feet of unimproved land area, and no protected wildlife habitat or other environmental resources. Two, further identifies the proposed disturbance, site construction to be adjacent to and integral to the proposed conversion of an existing barn on the parcel to a detached accessory dwelling unit, involving pending applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval for which a combined public hearing has been conducted by the planning board. Further notes, neither the planning board nor the conservation advisory board in review of these other applications, including through the conduct of field visits, identified any environmental issues associated with a proposed detached accessory dwelling unit, and the related site improvements, including those subject of this application for wetlands permit. Four, in consideration above, the planning board first determines it will not conduct the public hearing on this application for wetland permit, as could be required under Town Code Chapter 120, Wetlands, Section 120-129B6. Second, determines the proposed work will not create any significant adverse impact on the environment. And third, approves the application for wetlands permit, subject to the condition no work is commenced until the above cited special use permit and site plan approvals are granted by the planning board, and the related site plan stamped and a building permit issued. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Almost.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
I'll hold the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Okay.
Easy enough? Thank you.
Yes.
Up next?
Up next, we have, don't go away. Oh, you're not, very good. LXMI Property Holdings, David DeVetich, hello.
Want me to go there? Can I just have a quick question?
Oh, no, you can just ask it.
Okay, so I understand, frankly, a wetland permit has to be approved, or you have to approve a wetland permit in addition to site plan approval and special use permit.
Okay, we approved the site plan and special use permit for the accessory detached earlier. We just approved the wetland permit-
Okay.
-for that same project. I'm sorry?
You have to approve a wetland.
We just did.
Right, okay, I just understand the problem.
Yeah, we just did, but they can't commence building until they submit the final site plan for me to stamp and sign, and then get a building permit. Uh huh. Okay. LXMI Property Holdings, David DeVetich agent, 18 Hagerty Hill Road, special use permit and site plan review and approval. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize the construction and occupancy of a guest cottage in a 15-acre parcel in the rural countryside RC5 district. The guest cottage being proposed simultaneously with the proposed single-family dwelling on the parcel. Planning board review and processing as timely under Town Code and Seeker.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so 18 Hagerty Hill Road is a 15-acre parcel in the RC5 zone, and we had come in initially to meet with the planning board in a pre-application conference, I forget the actual name of it. And at that time, we had talked about building both a primary residence and detached accessory dwelling unit. And when we came in to consult with the planning board, the idea was that the detached accessory dwelling would sit in front of the primary residence in relation to the, what they call the front yard. Since that time, we've decided to move that detached accessory dwelling to the rear yard. So there was a determination from Ron Evangelista that said a variance is required, which is what the planning board had suggested at that time. That since changed, because we've moved the detached accessory dwelling. So just to catch everyone up, if you didn't hear that story. So quite simply, I believe we're asking to be added to the agenda for a public hearing at the next meeting, if possible. And we've submitted, I believe, a complete application, we've submitted architectural renderings of the guest cottage, or the detached accessory dwelling, sorry, long-term, and a photograph of inspiration for what the house is ultimately hoped to look like. It's not actual architecture, it's nothing we developed, it's just a picture off the internet to say, here's what we feel the house will look like, and we've given you more detail on the detached accessory dwelling, including a floor plan. It's proposed as a one-bedroom unit, it's proposed at 900 square feet, which is the maximum allowable. We are simultaneously processing with the county board of health for an expansion of the existing septic approval. The existing septic approval was for a four-bedroom system. We've asked to expand that by two bedrooms, even though the detached accessory dwelling is only proposed as a single bedroom. At the time we submitted that application, we didn't know whether it would be a one or two-bedroom.
Okay. Any questions for Darren? Okay.
The application is complete. You have a draft procedural resolution on page 22. And the only thing I would add to the resolution is, the opening paragraph before the term detached accessory unit, I would add the square footage, the 900 square feet.
Okay.
Two-thirds of the way through that paragraph. The rest of the resolution stands, time of the hearing will be 6:55 on the 20th.
Six fifty-five.
Yeah, it's-
Okay. The town of Ryan McPlanning Board, upon August 7th, 2014, reviewed by the zoning enforcement officer, and subsequent modification of proposed location of the secondary structure so as to eliminate need for an area variance, hereby access follows, on the August 28th, 2014, application by LXMI Properties, Property Holdings LLC, Darren DeVetich agent, for special use permit and site plan approval in the matter of a proposed detached accessory dwelling unit on a 15-acre residential premise at 18 Hagerty Hill Road in the rural countryside RC5 district. One, accepts the applications inclusive of the supporting submission made to the Duchess County Health Department as adequate for review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. Classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under Seeker, for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor be conducted. Schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for Monday, October 20th, 2014, at 6:55 p.m., and directs clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 125-66 and 125-77. Delegates planning board members, who wants to go to Hagerty Hill Road? Don't all speak at once. Man, it's not the bad part of town.
Just the floor went poorly on 308, nobody wants to come back.
Wow. Okay. Richard and-
I'll go.
Jesse. I knew if I held you here long enough, you did it. To conduct a field visit and report their observations at the time of public hearings. You'll coordinate with Jesse and Richard about the public hearing. Prefers the application to the town conservation advisory board for review and comment. Request further technical review of the application by the town's planning consultant, and without prejudice of to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit, authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working drafts of an EAF Part II and III, as may be necessary, Seeker resolution, and draft approval resolutions for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Almost.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Very good, okay. So just coordinate with Richard and Jesse about the site visit.
Jesse, do you still have my contact information, or?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
How about your relation?
Thank you.
Ooh, good question. Just seeing if, has anyone shown up for Joseph Romeo? Anyone showed up for Edward McNally? All right. Illyana Van Mitteren, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll allow you to say that in the future. Carol Knapp, agent, 96th Meadows Drive, special use permit and site plan review and approval. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning to authorize the installation of a permanent shoreline hitch and seasonal floating dock along the Hudson River, the location accessible in the historic preservation HP20 and water resource overlay districts, the LWRA and the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Carol Knapp, representative for Illyana Van Mitteren. We're looking for a special use permit under 12568VV, which is for marinas, boats, houses, boat clubs, ramps, docks, and moorings. As you, as indicated, the application is for 96th Meadows Drive, this is a 700-acre parcel. The parcel in question is a 20-acre parcel on the east side of the railroad tracks that is owned by Ms. Van Mitteren. Over the past year, we've sought and obtained all the necessary permits, which includes the Army Corps of Engineers individual permit, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Water Quality Certification, Excavation and Fill Navigable Waters Permit, New York State Department of State Coastal Management Program Consistency Concurrents, and the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, finding of no effect upon cultural resources. So we feel that we've covered all the bases necessary for the town permit, we're just waiting. Now, we've submitted all those in the package to you, and the package also contains a plethora of additional information that you may need for your review, for the private seasonal use floating dock. Basically, the only structure that will be permanent is a four-by-four concrete hitch that will be at the base of a trail that already leads down to the river. And this dock will be floated in seasonally in the April-May timeframe, installed with two anchors, and then at the end of the season, in October, it will be floated away and stored at Rondell Creek Marina.
Any questions? Okay, just, you're wondering, the reason that this comes up is because we have a special use permit requirement for, among other things, any development within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River. And since it's on the Hudson River, it, that's why we're here tonight, so-
Right, it's the historic district and the water overlay district.
As you say, a plethora of different, different issues. Any questions, though, from anyone about?
Michael, there was some correspondence that I saw regarding whether or not a wetlands permit was required in this particular case, is a determination made by the CEO-
My understanding is that it was not considered, well-
It is, it is not considered a wetland under the federal, any, any state or federal, doesn't have any of the three required characteristics.
So we're dealing strictly with special use permit and site plan?
Yes, my understanding is yes.
Okay, if you're dealing with the, the resolution, then you can strike any reference, any contingency reference in here to wetland permit?
I think Woody is waiting to issue a-
Well, I've got some interesting reading, the handout that was supplied, I've waded through it, and there's two things that I find interesting, and I don't know which permit this is, but it's permit number, and we'll, we'll talk about it later, but in order to protect adrominis fish species, no in-water construction work shall occur between March 1st and June 30th. That's the first thing. Then you go over to the DEC one, and it says, please note that all work authorized under this permit is prohibited during the trout spawning season commencing October 1st, which is 15 days from today, and ends in April 30th. So they got a narrow window of, of being able to do this.
Well, that would be for construction. You know, the sole construction here is a four-by-four concrete hitch above the mean high water line.
I'm not challenging you, I'm just saying what I'm reading here, and it's, you've got about that much time to do it.
Right, those are temporary anchoring structures which will be removed, put down in the spring and removed in the autumn.
In our permit, I'm sure we can put down a little thing, just making sure that that time can't be used either.
So I just bring it to your attention that I find that these two permits really limited what you can do in the water.
It's New York State.
You can have them, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what permit that is.
This is the Army Corps permit.
It's Army Corps, and this is DEC.
The concrete pad won't be in the water, though, right?
No, it will not be, it'll be...
So really, you're not doing...
We're not doing any in-water construction, exactly.
In the water, anyway, so it's a moot point.
But it says here, if I read it correctly, please note, all work authorized under this permit, DEC, can only be done, cannot be done...
Applicable only if checked.
Oh, thank you.
It's not.
Thank you, I'm glad, I'm glad somebody's here to keep me honest. Thank you.
And the other one was...
Good, no, you can have it. Move it away.
I have it here, but...
Michael, on the resolution, strike the reference to wetlands permit in the open paragraph.
Okay.
Strike that line.
Mm-hmm.
Strike the second in the, in number paragraph two, strike the "or."
Is above the water, and so there is no construction in the water itself.
Strike the "or" about that one action. Strike that next paragraph. What follows that?
I find that hard to consider.
And set it for 705.
With the government entities involved in this thing.
Okay.
Well, that's why we have had all the approvals...
Anything else?
No.
All the approvals have been obtained.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's 705.
705?
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
We're going to be running late on the right wing.
Okay. I have a little resolution here, see how this goes. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer hereby access follows on the August 28, 2014 applications by Iliana Van Merteren.
Merteren.
Oh, that's kind of close. You know, from New York, what do you want, you know? Carol Knapp, agent, for special use permit and site plan approval for work occurring within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River, and in the matter of the proposed installation of a permanent shoreline hitch, 16 square feet, and seasonal floating dock, 672 square feet, along the Hudson River, the location accessible from tax parcel map number given in the historic preservation HP20 and water resource overlay districts, the LWRP, and the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District. Accepts the applications as adequate review by the planning board, the board's advisors, and the public. Classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action under seeker for which coordinated environmental quality review is neither required nor will it be conducted. Schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications from Monday, October 20, 2014, at 7:05 p.m. and directs clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within town code chapter 125 zoning, sections 125-66, 125-77.
Period.
Period. Delegates planning board members who wants to go down to the river?
I want to go down to the river.
Richard wants to go down to the river, wants to go down to the river with Richard.
Don't you say you want to go there.
I'll go down to the river with Richard.
I'm not going to vote.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll drive you both.
There you go.
It doesn't get any better than that. I got the gator thing, I got the river thing going on.
And you promised not to push me in, right?
Right.
Okay. To conduct a field visit and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Refers the applications to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to section 239 of the genuine municipal law. Refers the applications to the town conservation advisory board for review and comment pursuant to town code chapter 118 waterfront consistency review. Refers the applications to the town waterfront advisory committee for review as to consistency with pertinent town coastal policies as set forth in the LWRP. Eight, requests further technical review of the application by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice to information that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of the above cited referral and field visit authorizes the planning consultant to prepare working drafts of any of Part II and III as may be necessary, seeker resolution, and draft approval resolution for consideration by the planning board when and if timely. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
Almost.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Very good. You want to give me information so I can get in touch with you, so I can coordinate the site visit?
Sure.
And then I'll check with Richard, see what your schedule is, and then we'll, and I'll see, have Ryan come down, too.
Okay.
All right.
This is a, your copy, this is the signed copy from the Army Corps, the copy that we had submitted.
Okay.
Didn't have their signature, it was sent down for a final signature.
Ah, well, thank you.
Ryan, you might have to bring your own gator.
Well, that'll go up to Joni right over here. And just, if you could write a phone
number or some kind, are you the one I'm going to be speaking to about the site visit, or who's going to coordinate this, who should I coordinate the site visit with?
Terrance Boil.
I volunteer also to be in contact, but Carol, if you choose a date that's good for you, contact her, we'll be waiting.
Okay, so we'll just need your phone, your phone number, or whatever you would prefer us to get in touch with you.
We'll do whatever it is.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, we will be in touch. Thank you. Okay. Rhinebeck Ford, New York State Route 1, Route 9G North Sketch Plan Conference, continuation of Sketch Plan Conference with the planning board in the ma... what?
Right around here.
Oh. I think I put my glasses back on, I could tell.
I thought we agreed we were coming in today.
We thought, I thought they were...
At our conference, yeah.
What they may have been waiting for is Ford approval, that they could really proceed with that, so they probably didn't get approved from Ford yet.
So it's probably deferred, then.
Yeah, it's probably deferred. Okay. The Southlands Foundation and Eric and Andrea Columbell, Jeremy Joyce, agent of New York State Route 9 South at Southlands Drive Sketch Plan Conference. Sketch Plan Conference and as may be timely, planning board review and processing under town code and seeker of applications required for reconstruction of dam pond improvement in the rural agricultural RA 10 district.
Hello, how are you?
We're good.
Good. Do you want me to hand out some pictures I have of the area?
The other members, yeah, Melody and I, I think, are familiar with it, but the other people probably need a little...
Map of the location, and then here's pictures, pictures of what I'll be talking about.
Okay, thank you.
We're good. We'll share.
See, that's a good, where's not, not identifying, very poor, aren't we?
The yellow is where the pond is.
Yeah, there you are.
The orange is, just so you have some reference, the yellow border of the, is Columbell property. Pond in question is on Southlands Foundation's property. And what happened is, they tried to repair an earth and dam that was there about two years ago, best as I can remember, and it failed. So if you look at the photos, I'm sorry, you got a question?
No.
Oh, if you look at the photos, you'll see, photo number three doesn't really apply anymore, but...
My memory's short.
You can see how in photo one, the earth and dam was just totally eroded away over the past two years. I think that's because they placed, they placed those culverts in photo number four too close to the bank. And I believe as the water drained into those culverts, it eroded away the bank. When I've seen this type of application before in ponds, these type of culverts where they drain it from the top are always pulled somewhere into the pond, so there's no erosion of soil. They shouldn't have been placed this close to the bank. And once you get one drop of water eating away through the dirt, it'll just keep on chewing its way through until you see picture number one, where it's chewed down six, seven feet. Another problem is that when they installed the culverts, they drilled through the concrete vertical one to put in the horizontal plastic ones. When they did that, they, they made no attempt to seal the joint between the plastic pipe and the concrete pipe. The picture's not the greatest, but you can see that dark shadow right there, that's the actual break in the pipe. The water no longer goes into the vertical concrete culvert. It just goes right underneath, I mean, the water's not even going through the totally eroded section. Water currently only goes through this pipe right here. And it does not go into the top pipe. The water's only coming through this one, and the water is only coming through this pipe. So initially, the people that I worked for at Columbells, they wanted me to build a dam to fix the problem, just take this out because it wasn't working and put in a dam. But that seems like that's going to be a much larger expense, and I'd have to take out building permits and get engineers to design the dam, and I didn't know it would be that entailed. So now what I'd like to do is fix some of the issues around the joint of the plastic and the concrete. I'd like to box that out and pour concrete in there to seal that joint. So water, because even if you fixed the earth and dam and brought that back up seven feet, you'd still have the issue that when there wasn't enough water to keep the level of pond high enough, it would want to drain through that broken joint. So even if you fix the earth and dam but don't fix that problem, the pond's still going to drain down. So I want to fix that problem, I want to fix the joint between the two pipes. And then after that is fixed, I want to take soil from the surrounding area and build the earth and dam back in place. You're not going to move the verticals back away from the bank, are you? The only thing I want to do is dig out around them, maybe go back eight to 10 feet. So you increased minimal, minimally increased the size of the pond, but in doing so, you're protecting the whole system. I just want to increase the area around the top of the culverts to alleviate... So this doesn't happen again. An erosion problem like that.
We had discussed, you know, this, the two options. One was this option, and the other was actually going in and re, and creating an actual dam structure, a masonry dam structure to alleviate this problem. This seemed to be more of a repair approach to it, easier to do, less review involved. DEC has, to our knowledge, will probably need just a document from them saying that indeed they're not interested, there's not enough water impounded by this, this dam, this structure, and that the dam itself is not such that they're going to be concerned with it, that they're not concerned with it.
But didn't we already know that because of the classification, that there, there's no classification on this?
There was some discussion, well, this is, it's not so much the stream itself, I think it's probably a Class C or maybe even Class D, I don't know. But very often, DEC, whether or not they're going to be interested in a dam depends on how much water is impounded, and, you know, the height of the structure, things of that sort. My understanding was there's some discussion that because of the minimal amount of water being held in by the dam when it functions, and the structure of the dam itself, that it was not an issue that DEC was concerned with.
But are we just repairing an existing dam?
Basically, that's what we're looking at here, yeah.
So why do we need to involve DEC?
You just want to check, because it may have been a time when DEC was never involved, and maybe they should have been.
Okay.
And you just don't want them coming in later, once you get halfway through it and saying, wait a minute.
Until you take it all apart.
Yeah.
Well, we were told by...
Dam repair as well as construction requires a DEC permit.
Oh, repair as well.
Yeah, repair does, repair does, you know, in this case, it's likely that DEC does not have, well, we'll say it does not have jurisdiction, but the planning board should have it in writing for DEC.
In writing, yes.
There was, a young lady was with you at the pre-submission conference.
House.
Yeah, she, she, she referenced some sort of a conversation, a brief conversation with DEC, but again, that's a hearsay unless it's documented by DEC.
Right.
She could indicate that she had the name of the person she spoke with at DEC. So she, it would be logical for her to reach out again to that contact and ask for just, even if it's an email confirmation.
Yeah, even if it's one of those, we spoke on, we spoke on such and such a date, you said, please, please respond by, to confirm.
Right, I mean, she could initiate the email and just ask them to respond.
Right. And that would be, we would, we would need that letter. Basically, as I recall, the special permit requires just working within the 100 feet of a stream, something like that, and site plan goes with that. That's the two things you'd be applying for from the town.
Special use permit?
Special use permit and site plan, which goes with it. As I recall, we also...
So I have to generate a site plan for the area?
Basically, for the area of the dam, just what you're doing right here.
By an engineer?
Um, I don't think that we would require that of an engineer. I think basically, that's going to be more of a DEC question, what they require, if anything.
I've had some permits with the DEC before, and I've just, I've drawn sketches and got them...
If they're good with that, we would be good with it.
Okay, but they may not even...
Then whatever they would want, if they wanted it, is what you can provide us with, and that'll be fine.
You have the ability to waive the requirement. Would actually be a waiver of the ordinance reads that stand plans shall be provided, you know, shall be assigned, et cetera, et cetera. But you do, would have the authority to waive.
In this instance, as it is a repair. It's not a wetland, so the wetland permit does not come into it. That's, I think, what we're just looking at here, is...
Special use permit.
And site plan, yeah.
In site plan.
Right.
How I'm going to, I'm sorry.
What about historic district within X number of feet of the Hudson River?
Well, that's when, well, they're already having to do that special use permit, because it's within 100 feet of a stream. It's the same special use permit, it has a number of different reasons where it's triggered. One is 1,000 feet from the Hudson, another is...
100 feet.
100 feet from a stream or a water body or something like that. So we already got you nailed on that one, so. I don't think there's anything else. I can't think of anything else.
I can't.
That's basically what the application would be. I think the other thing we would need is probably some written confirmation from both Southlands and your employers to allow this to go forward, since the work is on Southlands, but your employers are actually undertaking it, just so that we don't have any problems later with them saying something was happening illegally on their property.
That's how to do that, Southlands.
Okay. Art, can you think of anything else we're going to need?
I think that's about all.
Summed it up?
So, once I take out, once I apply for the special use permit, then will I be at one more meeting, two more meetings?
You will, you will basically, probably two more meetings. Yeah, two more meetings. When will we accept the application? We'll set the public hearing, we'll circulate it to those people who need to see it. Then at the next meeting, you can have the public hearing. I assume all will go, well, we can close the public...
Public hearing just for adjacent properties?
It's for, well, it's for the whole, anyone can come and speak, but the only ones who are noticed are adjacent properties within 500 feet. I'm not sure exactly what the figures...
The sheriff orders.
Right, within certain footage. And Joni can fill you in on exactly what's required.
You'll like it. And the whole thing is, I'm trying, trying to get this going.
Yeah. Joni can help you with all of that, as well, as well as the forms. Two meetings should do it.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Want me to keep those, do you want me to take them from you?
Entirely up to you. Okay. And get in touch with Joni, and she can fill you in on the proper applications and all that sort of thing.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. For the last time, we will go down the list. Is anyone here for Joseph Romeo? Anyone here for Edward McNally? Anyone here for Rhinebeck Ford? Okay.
Got one more referral, and you had two, you had a ZBA referral and a town board referral.
So for the town board referral, I will turn it over to Melody.
Okay. In consideration of the town board's referral, planning board review of a proposed local law amending the boundaries of the overlay MIO district set forth within town code chapter 125 zoning. Town board's referral was made on August 11, 2014, with the planning board's report and recommendation there on due within 60 days, i.e. not later than October 10, 2014. I believe you all should have received a draft report from a planning consultant addressing this issue and putting forth recommendations for us in terms of our report back to the town. So Art, do you want to introduce this and go over what you think are the pertinent points?
This draft report for consideration by the planning board was prepared at the request of the vice chair, with obviously the chair fully recused from this particular discussion, this particular matter. Simple background here is that the town comprehensive plan provides, provided for the directive that soil mining be restricted to active, existing active mine sites within the Town of Rhinebeck, and that no new mine sites be authorized. When the town board then proceeded in December of, I believe it was 2009, to adopt the comprehensively amended town zoning law, the town created, within the, around the zoning districts map, a mining overlay district. Within that mining overlay district, opportunities provided for securing of a special use permit for the conduct of soil mining as defined by the code. That mine, mining overlay district encompasses, as set forth on the zoning district map, encompasses to approximately 360 acres of property to the west of White Schoolhouse Road, less that portion of those parcels, those identified parcels that lie within 100, 250 feet of the outward boundary of those parcels. So while there's no specific calculation provided at this point in time, it would be my estimate that of the 360 acres in the composite parcels that were at least in part within the mining overlay district, about 250 acres were included within the mining overlay district itself. In other words, those lands that are internal to those properties 200 feet distant from their, their boundaries. Within that mining overlay district, there are currently found three life of mine areas that have been designated by New York State DEC, or approved by New York State DEC through their permitting process, permitting and review processes. Just for information, these are generally referred to here locally as the LeBotsky parcel, LeVonderleaf, and the... Lavanderleaf, and the Kinlin slash Red Wing properties. Those life of mine areas total about, let me see, they total about 80 acres. Red Wing, 37 and 1/2 acres, Lobatsky, 20.9, Lavanderleaf, 23. The proposed local law interprets those life of mine areas to be, in fact, the existing active mine sites as described within the town development plan, and proposes that the boundaries of the mining overlay district be modified through zoning map amendment so as to be contracted and to be made coincident with the boundaries of those three life of mine areas. That's essentially the proposal. The effect of the amendment of the district properties will be to authorize by special use permit soil mining as defined within the town code, only on those lands lying within the amended boundaries of the MIO district, and to prohibit soil mining elsewhere on those lands that are removed from the present MIO district in the same fashion that soil mining is prohibited elsewhere in the town of Rhinebeck. Within the amended MIO boundary, where soil mining would continue to be authorized by special use permit, the proposed law would not change in any way the provisions of the town code governing mining. Further, the amendment of the mining overlay district boundaries has no effect on any of the other uses that are authorized within the present MIO boundaries, or in fact, within the 360 acres that I alluded to, by virtue of their inclusion within the rural countryside RC 5 district. In other words, anything that is presently authorized within the RC 5 district could occur, could continue to occur on those lands, whether by permit or special permit use. The report prepared, drafted for consideration by the planning board follows through the matters of inquiry that are set forth in the town code and identifies specifically as a complement to the language in the proposed local law that was introduced or preliminarily introduced by the town board. This report sets forth with greater specificity the various environmental resources of the area of the, essentially, within the present MIO overlay that would be protected and preserved to a greater extent if the MIO district boundaries were amended as proposed by the, by the town board. There's various documentation regarding all of those, those features, which include wetlands and streams and aquifers and various habitat, ag lands, et cetera. The overall bottom line from the planning board's perspective in terms of the draft report is that the town board's consideration and adoption of the mining overlay amendment is vital or essential to carrying out the intent, the objectives of the town development plan. And accordingly, the report offers, in summary, the following recommendations to the town board. That the planning board recommends the town board act sequentially as follows with respect to that, to the proposed local law. Upon completion of the life of mine areas map, which is still under preparation by Mr. Gominski, and any modifications within the proposed local law that might be deemed desirable by the town board in consideration of this report, in other words, in terms of the greater specificity regarding resources, et cetera, that the board actually introduce the proposed local law or a proposed local law. Secondly, that the board conduct required environment, town board conduct required environmental quality review in consideration of the present EAF Part 1, which is available from the town board, the town board's completion of EAF Parts 2 and 3, and issuance of a determination of significance in its role as secret lead agency. Three, that the board process the local law in a manner described within, prescribed within the town, Town Code Chapter 125, and that the board ultimately, the town board ultimately adopt and file the proposed local law in the manner prescribed by, by law. In consideration of the matter of environmental review, this report suggests that the planning board has identified during its review of the proposed local law, no potential adverse environmental effects associated with the adoption that would call for the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement, and that the planning board has identified many beneficial aspects or beneficial effects that would occur upon adoption of the local law, obviously including concurrence or with the, the town development plan, and that the board further recommends a neg, negative declaration be issued and filed with respect to the proposed local law. That's the, the sum and substance, there's a lot of detail provided, but that's essentially the, the substance of the, of the draft report, as discussed with the chair and, and reviewed with the planning board council.
You're not expecting us to pass on this or reject it tonight, are you?
You have until the 10th of October-
Can't do it tonight.
Yeah. You have until the 10th of October to take it, to take a position based on the town board's referral of August 11th, there's 60 days for planning board report.
Which would mean the scheduling of a, of an interim meeting in order to meet the scheduled deadline.
Right, right.
Well, one viable response, I mean, this is just our recommendation, is no response. I mean, I, this is all pretty fresh to me.
The board is obligated under the zoning law to report, it's a shall report. You have 60 days from town to referral from the town board.
Right, but we don't-
You don't have to do it tonight.
Right.
No, you don't have to do it tonight, I'm just saying, no, you said, you know, no response, I'm just saying that it is a shall, it's an obligation of the planning board to, but you don't have to do it tonight, you do have to, you do have to do it by October 10th, which is the vice chair-
I'd like to read a little bit more of the, I mean, I skimmed through this this afternoon electronically-
Correct.
-when I just got it. I, I certainly can't have an opinion without knowing a little bit more.
Have you received a copy of the introductory local law?
I do have that.
Okay.
Yep, I do have that. I see, you know, I just see concerning words like, the planning board believes it essential. I just need to know what that, I need to make sure I absorb every bit of it so I understand the full, when we make a statement like that, we should, we need to be able to say why, that's all. And again, it's, it's not a coincidence that an application was placed and all of a sudden a new law is on the table. I, you know, I personally don't want the town, I realize there's very strong public opinion about this whole thing, but the town should not be unnecessarily getting into court battles, you know.
This is, this is an initiative of the town board, though.
I, I understand that.
And is occurring under the guidance of the town attorney.
I understand that, I'm just concerned that even in the future, an application is presented to the town, you know, it can be, it can be seen as a response by the town to, because they don't like it, which is, I'm not okay with. It's, it's a permitted use, I don't think anyone's broken any, everyone's followed the rules to a T. I know that a lot of people don't like this, but in all fairness, we're talking about a, a landowner, a Rhinebeck landowner. Whether or not you like the commercial trucking business is, you know, is not the issue. What's the right thing to do so that everyone's happy in the end? It's a big deal, as everyone knows.
Jesse, Sharon? You have two board members here.
You have two board members who want to one time, which I think is fair, it's fair to schedule a special meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, we really need time to really read it.
Bessie?
So, um-
I have a problem, October 6th, Monday.
Well, two weeks, two weeks from now is the 29th, which gives us, you know, should there be a situation, I still believe it's a little time at the far end of it.
Right, right.
We need additional time for anything.
Yeah, that's right, 6 would be pushing it in terms of the far end.
Right, the 6 would be extremely close. How are folks for the 29th?
I can do that.
Well, this might, or might not be out of order, but since we are going to be consulting with our attorney on an application, can we make a workshop out of that consultation and this potential law in one room, or is it inappropriate?
I think they need to be kept separate.
I think the two.
I, I don't think that they need to, I think it's better to keep them as separate.
But I would like to, to actually listen to John Lyons. Is there any reason why we can't have him come in?
There's absolutely no reason, but these are two separate things we're talking about here. One is a special use permit application, and the other is, you know, a proposal to amend the local law. And while you link them, they are not necessarily linked.
But we could have a special meeting and follow it with a workshop, too?
We can, we, yeah, we can talk about that, but I want to clarify, we'll, we'll talk a little later, you know, you, we do have a situation where Bob is not able to join us at the moment on a regular basis, so I want to confirm, since this is an important meeting, that we will, with the recusal of, of Michael, we, we're going to need the quorum. So, is everybody good with the 29th? Yes, are you thinking?
I, 29th, this is the 5th Monday.
I'm sure I am. It's a Monday night?
Yes, two weeks from tonight.
I don't know what's going on tomorrow. Unless I look at my calendar.
Well, can you do that?
I'm sure I'm going to be free on a Monday night.
All right, so I'm hearing that as a, as an agreement that we will convene on the 29th of September at 6:30 for purposes of discussing the proposed local law.
So you need a motion to conduct a special meeting at 6:30?
And I have that motion.
Who made the motion?
Sharon make the motion, Jesse, all those in favor opposed. We will reach out to John and see if there's an opportunity to involve him the other discussion on the same night so that we're able to make some progress.
Yeah, we can treat it as two separate physical meetings.
We can.
One diverse from the other, but-
But we'll have to advertise it as such, right?
No.
Don't we have to notify, it's a, like, if it's a workshop, the public can attend, they can't participate, but they can attend.
That's correct.
So they should be notified that we're going to have X meeting at 6:30 and-
Followed by-
Followed by a 7 o'clock, so 6:45.
What do we need to do, Joan, to make this work?
I don't believe we need to publicize a meeting with our attorney on attorney's advice, that's a-
No, that's right, too.
That's a confidential meeting.
Well, we could make that, yeah, we could make that an executive session, given the fact that we're concerned that we're doing legally the correct thing.
All right, so let's, let's, we'll touch base with John tomorrow to confirm that-
Whatever he says.
If he can be there, and if so, we'll, we'll take some direction from him in terms of timing.
Notices a meeting and going to executive-
Hmm?
Notices a meeting and going to executive session.
Okay. All right, anything, anything else on this matter? Okay. Done with that?
We've got one on the right, Michael back in.
Michael, can you come back?
We're aiming for the 6:30 time slot, right?
Yep, I just didn't know which order, you know, depending on where John might have to go. He's got other thoughts.
Right.
Yeah, we are. I mean, we can still address our discussion of this. All right.
Okay, our final item is a Brennan Kearney area variance, and I believe that I already have had the public hearing on this. At this point, it's, horses left the barn, but... Let's see. The issues with it, it is a relatively small lot. I don't know, I'm just trying to remember from the public hearing situation, I don't recall that there were any concerns raised, although I was not at the public hearing, just from what I've heard. Once again, it's another situation in which, you know, the upzoning in the town has created some problems, you know, for people who should do things which they could have done five years ago.
I couldn't have done this either.
You don't think this one either, because of the size of the property?
A two-acre parcel.
Because of variance.
It's just very substantial variance, very substantial variance, and is that variance with what the development plan says about creating additional dwelling units on small parcels.
Small parcels.
You know, I mean, semi at boards, I think the board, the ZBA has to carefully consider that, and maybe consider, you know, while every case is supposedly different. Carefully consider precedent here. Very carefully consider precedent. It's a reduction from five acres to two acres.
It's different.
It's huge.
Yeah.
And it's not with respect to some modification in the principal dwelling, it's to create a second dwelling unit on the premises.
Complicated to three, yes, it does.
I was not at the ZBA hearing, so I don't know specifically what was said, what consideration, but I believe the hearing was on the 6th, so the ZBA has 60 days to-
Yeah.
-make a determination, I think it's 60 or 62 days.
There has been some public comment, because I know I saw a letter or two concerning this copy of a letter or two.
Right.
And quite clearly, you know, questions been raised about density, density in the RC 5 district and the suitability of the site to accommodate sanitary suits and other arrangements, which is why, you know, at least if the ZBA grants the variance, I think they've got to make it very clear, it matters, got to get back to the planning board, and it's got to get back here with clear documentation regarding satisfaction and health department requirements.
Well, it would have to come back to the planning board under special use permit, so it would have to come back to us at any rate. But it is, I mean, it's, it's a question we've had with a number of variance requests before the ZBA in the last year, is the magnitude of, of the requests, and many of them have been, you know, quite significant beyond the, what, the 15, 10, 15% that's often from an area standpoint, is it 10, 15, 20% that's considered?
10% is generally considered de minimis, anything over 10% is not considered, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And we've, basically, we're talking things a whole lot more than that, so, let me read what Art has here and see what you all think about it. The town of Rhinebeck Planning Board has reviewed upon referral the application for area variances submitted by Brennan Kearney, case 870, in the matter of the proposed conversion of an existing barn on a two-acre parcel in the rural countryside district to a detached accessory dwelling unit, and comments as follows. One, the magnitude of the request, a reduction in minimum required lot area from five to two acres is quite substantial and may be construed as inconsistent with the intent of the Town Code Chapter 125, and limiting opportunity for the creation of additional dwelling units to situations involving parcels of not less than minimum required lot area within the RC 5 district. The planning board recommends the ZBA both carefully consider this observation and additionally rely upon its own study of the facts in deciding this application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth at Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125-124C and D, including due consideration of the input of neighboring property owners. Three, in addition, should the requested area variance be granted, the planning board advises the ZBA to clearly state the requirement, the requirement applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval, including documentation of consultation with the Dutchess County Health Department and wetlands permit, as may also be required, be timely submitted to this board. Got to hear a motion to approve. Second discussion.
Yes.
Well, I'm just, I, you know, in talking about the increased size and everything, I'm just wondering if in one and two, we're expressing our concern strongly enough. You know, because, as you pointed out, you know, there's this pattern of, you know, what feels to us like excessive overages and, you know, I like- what feels to us like excessive overages and, you know, I don't know if we strongly advise, you know, we're saying recommend maybe Planning Board's...
I love that for you folks.
Where is the site?
I love that for you folks to edit.
Pardon?
Where is the site?
On 211 Ackert Hook Road.
Which is where?
I'm not sure.
Is that next to that house that we had in the swamp?
No, it's not next to it, no. It's not near urban builders, it's not.
No, it's near Leckman.
Yeah.
They're among the commenters.
Yes, and I did read that one letter from them, yes, they're quite concerned about it.
Where is it?
It's down near the Leckman property.
On Ackert Hook, it's before you get to the...
Before Meet Burger?
It was the old Maris Brothers property years and years ago.
South side or the north side? Well, it's part, the Leckman property was part of the day tub, right? The barn is on there.
I thought part of it was, the Maris Brothers owned it at one time or something like that. I don't, history being what it is.
The Star Miller barn is on part of the Leckman property.
Right.
So, it wraps around down there before it hits, it's not Burger, it is Burger, yeah, before it hits Burger.
So, this is an existing two-acre parcel?
Correct.
Right.
And there are quite a few parcels like that in that area.
With an as-of-right residence on the property.
Right.
I'm sorry?
With an as-of-right residence on the property. In other words, it's being used for a purpose authorized in the district.
Right.
There's a little practical difficulty involved with creating another unit.
Yeah.
It's a bonus that's being requested.
Everyone's entitled to put an accessory dwelling on their property.
Well, they're entitled...
In a detached structure, in this case, if the property is at least a conforming lot in the district of at least five acres.
So, they must be conforming.
Yes.
So, if you have less than five acres, you're not entitled to put an accessory dwelling on it.
Without a variance.
Which is why they're...
Without a variance.
Without a variance, yes.
Yes.
So, we're asking to, and what was the square footage of the barn?
I do not know.
It's apparently, the unit's apparently less than 900 square feet, proposed unit's apparently less than 900 because the ZEO has not required a variance with respect to the square footage of the detached unit.
Just the non-conforming, yes, and adding another structure. So, it's a tiny thing.
It's similar to the variance request from Davidovich for Dish, but it was like from a 5.129 property down.
It was from, yeah, from five to four.
Considerably different. I mean, 4-point-something property in the five-acre district. So, it was a considerably different request in terms of magnitude.
Yeah. Davidovich was a 15 percent variance, this is a 60 percent variance.
Which is huge.
But the structure is already there.
Yes, but I think the question becomes, you know, the ability of sanitation.
What the guy's going to use it for as opposed to a variance. It's either going to be a barn, or it's going to be an accessory dwelling.
More people on the property, yeah.
Right.
And I don't think we have enough information based on what I hear at this table to make an intelligent recommendation.
I think the discussion is basically focused upon the magnitude of the area variances perhaps being precedent-setting throughout the five-acre district. I think, at least, that's what I'm hearing from people, that it's basically the concern.
We're not making a decision, we're...
No, we're making a recommendation.
Well, we're not even making a recommendation, we're just pointing out.
You know, and you might want to add the, you might want to simply add a word instead of saying maybe construed, maybe reasonably construed, which is stronger, you know.
But along Woody's line of reasoning, the structure's already there.
But there's not septic, there's not water, there's not the amenities that converted...
But what is the purpose of our restricting non-conforming lots from being able to just throw an accessory dwelling? I mean, the main reason is, is, yes, septic and everything, but that's easy enough to resolve, water and septic. It's visibility, it's open space, right?
It's residential, it's, speaking of planners, it's residential density.
Right.
It's population concentration, it's requirement for supporting facilities like water and sewer, it's traffic generation.
Yes.
I just want to say, I don't know if this would be considered to your side, as it's happened in the past, but there were residents concerned about the traffic issue. I have the letter from the, if you want to hear what this is, if you'd like to know.
This is on this specific piece of property?
From the ZBA hearing.
Right. So, it was a public hearing, and some nearby neighbors spoke at the obvious public hearing concerned with a possible traffic issue, particularly with some hedges blocking the view of a possible increase in the number of cars, which would be the main issue, it seems like, because you would have more people going in and out. The Board did not note any outstanding issues with the project resolved in the routine site visit. Kearney was present on September 3rd and stated that one nearby homeowner is worried about quote lots of habitat.
Okay. I think the main concern that we have here is basically just consistency within the zoning law. We have a five-acre district, we have regulations. If we don't agree with the regulations...
Well, I'd take exception to that, because if the building is there, we're not adding anything. The building is there, whether he uses it as a barn or he uses it as a silo.
Well, actually, you are adding, you're adding potential water use, septic system, additional residents, things of that sort. I mean, I have a barn, too, but no one lives in it. It's, I mean, it's, you know, but if I were to convert that into an accessory dwelling, all of a sudden, you know, you have more people there, septic, what, all those different uses.
Does he have county approval?
Stand back and say, what happens if the guy, that's the only way he's been able to be able to keep his property, is to turn that in so he has a source of income?
Well, that's...
Assume he's retired, I don't even know the person.
It's a woman. It's a woman.
She can be retired, too.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's a woman.
And she's not retired.
But she should keep working.
And she's not retired. She is, she's not retired.
She's only working for her.
Right.
Just tell you.
Yeah, she works here.
I'm not going to mess with her. Approved.
So, but that's the issue. There are many things in the law we may not agree with, but if we're not consistent with what is, what we approve, disapprove, recommend, then we're in big trouble.
Well, Art has made it clear, he's pointed out the fact that the reduction in the minimum lot area from five to two is quite substantial. That's a fair statement, you know, we're not coming down on the side of what the...
And that should be, that's supposed to be the first consideration of the ZBA?
Right. And this is going back...
There's no change. The zoning law changed. The house was there, the barn was there, the lot was X number of square feet, nothing's changed.
But the barn...
What happens inside the building will change, that's all.
I personally think that I don't have enough without actually seeing this and seeing the potential traffic hazard it creates by a car entering the road behind hedges and everything, that I know enough to say, given the fact that the building's already there and everything, that it creates...
We're not commenting, we're just basically making a recommendation to the ZBA in terms of the variance.
I don't feel like I know enough or seen enough to make a recommendation, myself, myself.
Okay. So, what would you have us do? Report back to the ZBA that we don't have enough information to make consideration?
I think someone from the Planning Board, given the fact that we're going to make a decision that's going to affect this applicant, should be able to, you know, we're sitting here saying, well, where is that? Where's this house? No one's obviously seen that.
We've asked them for information before.
Actually, we're not making a decision, the ZBA makes the decision.
Right.
And if the ZBA approves the variance, then yes, we will be making the decision because they come before us.
Right, but our recommendation certainly has some influence on the ZBA, that's all.
It does, and that's why I think we're restricting our recommendation here strictly to the magnitude of the variance. As Art says, generally 10 percent is considered de minimis, this is 60 percent.
Okay, so we're going to agree with what they basically told us, which is right, this is a substantial reduction.
And that's based, and telling them to use their own judgment.
And number two is pretty standard for what we're...
Yeah, and I'm okay with that. We agree with you, it is a substantial adjustment, and that should be considered, given the fact as Art just stated, that should be one of the primary...
And that's all, that's all we're recommending to them.
Yeah, because sewage is a board of health problem, not ours.
Right.
And that's listed in three.
And it's going to be a challenge for them to get that in, in two acres, they're going to have one.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it is.
It's also on a well, so...
Oh, yes, it's going to be...
Even more difficult.
Yeah.
As for separation requirements.
It's got 100 down and a flow in the well.
Yeah, and they're on their wetlands, too. So, they may be even further restricted in what they can do and where they can do it. So, basically, this just sums up, you know, things to be looked at, that are concerns, legitimate concerns, and it's a recommendation, let them use their judgment, and if they do indeed grant the variance, then it becomes our issue, and it becomes our responsibility to determine whether or not this goes forward. It's that.
And it's perhaps helpful to the ZBA because if they grant a variance of this magnitude, they need to be very, very careful in providing, presenting the documentation of the justification for that variance. Otherwise, there is the potential of someone bringing in action if you have that matter overturned.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Now, on the same token, we've had a number of houses in this community that have had auxiliary buildings for grandma to live in. Grandma died three days after the building was up, and it's up for rent.
Oh, yeah.
There's half a dozen of them in the town of Ryman Beck.
Oh, sure.
That's happened. Nothing's done about that.
No.
So...
Different issue.
Yeah.
It's in the same vein, though.
But that's basically what this recommendation is. It's recommending issues that we believe the ZBA should be aware of, use their own judgment, which they will do, and we'll see whether or not then it becomes our issue to deal with.
Do we need to read it, or do you need a motion?
You adding that word reasonably in front of, you're adding the word reasonably in front of construed?
I'm happy with that. Maybe reasonably construed as inconsistent.
That's a...
Maybe, yes, and in the first one and the second line, maybe reasonably construed as inconsistent with the intent of the Town Code.
Now, at some point in time, the ZBA and/or the Town Board is going to have to catalog and inventory these variances that are being requested and granted, and step back and say, in light of this, you know, is there a need to either rethink? Is there a need to rethink the development plan? Is there a need to rethink certain components of the zoning law? Because if the same requests keep coming before the ZBA repeatedly, there's inconsistency between what the people of the community want to do, or need to do, and what the law allows.
They're talking about affordable housing. They want to have affordable housing. Here's a guy that's making an offer for affordable housing, and we're not happy with it. It's double-edged sword.
Yeah, it is. Most of the decisions we end up having to make are, there's no question.
Thank God we get the big bucks.
But that's...
I love, I love what Art just said. I mean, you know, obviously, there's problem, and it should perhaps be revisited by the Town Board, but with our recommendation to say, this is what we're constantly bombarded with, you know, there was big changes made.
But for this one today, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so we do have to vote on it one way or the other, okay? So, I guess I'll poll the Board since there seems to be diversity.
Can you read the motion again?
It's right here. "The town of Ryman Beck Planning Board has reviewed, and the only thing we added was the word reasonably, maybe reasonably construed as inconsistent."
Okay.
And I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Sharon seconded it. Any further discussion? I'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, it's four aye and one no. And we'll see what we get back from the ZBA.
Opposed with my reasoning that I really feel like I don't, I can't say...
Was it four or five?
It was five. Five aye, one no, yes. Part of the problem is, the zoning law requires the ZBA to refer these to us. It does not necessarily state the timeframe within which that is done.
Oh, yes, it does.
It does? Oh.
The ZBA is to refer the matter to the Planning Board coincident with its, either prior to or coincident with the scheduling of the public hearing.
And we need to remind the ZBA that we're not getting these things in a timely manner.
So, we're being holed up to public hearings by not closing the meeting?
It's already happened.
We just want to talk.
It's already happened.
After the last meeting, this is our first meeting, and we explained this to them.
Yeah.
We broke the rules.
Woody?
Okay. But I hear a second to Woody's motion. All in favor?
Go on.
You stand in charge.
Can we just stay one minute?